... historic Rockport Opera House. First item on our agenda is, we don't have any public hearing, we do have some minutes to consider for approval. We have the minutes of February 12th, 2018, for the board's consideration, and I await a motion on those. They're in the packet.
Yeah, well, we also had some other ones, too.
Right, but those, I actually determined those had already been approved. The ones that Linda handed out tonight, the December ones have already been approved, we don't need to act on those.
All right.
Just have February 12th.
I move to accept the meetings of February 12th as written.
Second.
I moved in second, any discussion, any corrections at all on these minutes? I looked through them and they look good to me.
So the rest of these will take up, these are just for our review over time?
The December ones have already been approved. Linda wasn't sure, so she gave us copies anyway, but they were approved at a previous meeting. So a motion on the floor is for the minutes of February 12th. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor for approving as presented? Any opposed? None, okay. Next meeting is April 4th. We have those meetings for our perusal. I await a motion on those.
What did you say, April 12th?
April 4th.
April 4th. I move to accept the meeting minutes of April 12th.
4th.
Second. Any discussion, corrections on these minutes? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a four to nothing vote. And finally, we have the minutes for April 9th. For our review. Wait a motion on those.
Move to accept the meeting minutes of April 9th. Thank you.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second on the meeting minutes of April 9th. Any comments, discussion, corrections to be made here? If not, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Four to nothing vote. Okay, so those minutes are taken care of. Our next select board meeting, which may not be on the calendar online, although it may be, because Diane's pretty good about that, but we will have a meeting on Tuesday, May 29th, at 7:00 PM here at the Rockport Opera House, and it will be streamed. That's a meeting that became necessary because of some items that we couldn't get on the agenda tonight. That will hopefully be a fairly short meeting, but it will be a meeting nonetheless. After that, the next select board meeting will be the organizational meeting on Wednesday, June 13th, which will immediately follow the adjournment of the annual town meeting at the Rockport Opera House on the stage upstairs. And then following that, the regular select board meeting, which will be the new board on Monday, June 25th, at 7:00 PM. There will be announcements, a candidate forum for select board candidates will be held this Wednesday, May 16th, 6:30 PM here.
Six, isn't it six?
Reading my agenda says 6:30.
Six, six to seven thirty.
It is, okay.
Yeah, that, there was a little confusion.
Six o'clock, okay, correction there, so it's six o'clock.
Record show.
And that will be here at the Opera House, it will be streamed online as well. Town office will be closed on Monday, May 28th for Memorial Day. And the annual town meeting will convene on Tuesday, June 12th, at 8:00 AM in the Richards Room of the town office, when the polls open for town elections and voting by secret ballot on Articles 3 through 10, as well as the open positions on the select board, the library committee, the budget committee, and school board positions. The polls will close at 8:00 PM, town meeting will then adjourn until Wednesday, June 13th, at 7:00 PM, at which time the town meeting will reconvene upstairs here at the Opera House to act an open session on all remaining articles. And if you have never come to a Rockport town meeting, we urge you to do so. It's fun and exciting, and it is where the decisions are made about how your town runs for the upcoming year, in particular, the budget.
And where are you gonna be?
I will be otherwise occupied, I'm sorry to say. Business reasons, I have to be out of town. I'll leave it in your, on your full control. Okay, committee meetings, committee openings are listed on the agenda. If you have interest in serving in a committee, please fill out a form, and we'd be glad to consider you. Keep in mind that if, even if there are no vacant seats on a committee, we do have the opportunity for you to serve as an alternate member, which allows you to get to know the committee and perhaps be ready to step in when a full position becomes available. Do we have any agenda changes this evening?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we delay the update on comprehensive plan review committees' work because Bill could not make it and we have some issues to discuss.
Okay.
That's item M.
M, okay.
Under new business.
Is there a second on that motion?
Can we glean most of what the update would be from his email? Or would it still be worthwhile to have a brief discussion about where they're at right now?
I think it's worthwhile.
Just a brief discussion on it?
Well, but he, Bill can be here on the 29th.
Let me second his motion before we go too far along.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, Bill can be here on the 29th. That's why I was, thought it would be a good idea to push that off, just the two weeks. There's nothing critical.
There's no time sensitive.
No, no, there isn't. And I think it's better to have Bill here so that he can participate in the discussion, because he's done an awful lot of work on this. So, all in favor of that motion? That's a four to nothing vote. Any further agenda changes? If not, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment this evening?
Thank you. I have two things that I want to speak to.
Please identify yourself with the folks at home.
Marcy Kasas, Rockport.
Thank you.
We're all here from Rockport. Two things I want to speak to. The first thing is the road cleanup that we had on the last weekend in April. I just wanted to give a quick update about how that went. We had earlier in the month DOT and Bull Duck clean Route 1, Route 90, and portions of, I'm sorry, Route 1, Route 17, and portions of Route 90. They collected over 2,000 pounds of trash during their cleanups. And then for the two-day event that we had on the 28th and 29th, we had over 100 volunteers pick up 1,750 pounds of trash, not including the returnables, which we redeem and reinvest. Part of that was cleaning 25 total roads. This time around, we were able to clean all of our major roads minus Mill Street, Old County, and a portion of South. We had student participants, we had clubs, we had businesses, including adventure advertising, Bank of America, Bayview Concierge, Farley &amp; Sons, Graff and Brothers, Town of Rockport, Rockport Landscape Design, Rockport Steel, Mainwater, Camden National Bank, Sammasett, and the Study Hall. So I wanted to make sure that we could thank them for participating. And then the last thing that we did this year that was different from years past is we had a competition, a friendly competition called Bag the Butts, where we encouraged people to pick up cigarette butts, and the Study Hall sponsored that. And the team that picked up the most butts won a cash prize of $250. That went to Simtons Corner Hall, and they picked up four pounds, 15 ounces. I know. Second place was Camden National Bank, they won $100, they picked up four pounds, 11 ounces. And then the third-place team was the environmental cleanup crew from Camden Hills, and they picked up one pound, 11 ounces. Rick, your team came in a close third.
What about, what about the fourth?
Fourth, Cora and Cole Kasas, off of South Street. And Rick?
They worked really hard for that.
They worked really, really hard. And then, Rick, you guys collected one pound, 6 ounces, so you were a close fifth.
It's amazing how much, that's the number-one thing you pick up, it seems.
It is, if you pick them up. But oftentimes with the cleanups, the cigarette butts are what's overlooked. So this time, we really wanted to focus our efforts on that. So that was a total of 17 and a half pounds of cigarette butts, which we equated to about 30,000 butts, is what we picked up. So that was good. And the only negative that came from this cleanup was that last year, our spring and our fall cleanup, we picked up about 5,000 pounds total. This spring alone, we're projecting it to be about 4,000 pounds total. So what we're seeing is an increase in the litter, not a decrease. So we want to kind of creatively think about ways that we can maybe stop people from littering within our community. So, that's what we're working on right now at the RCC, and we'll probably come to you guys in the future with some of our ideas. So that was that, and Maggie Timmerman apologizes for not being here tonight. She wanted to come and present a lot of this information, but she's under the weather, so she couldn't be here. That's my first thing. And then the second thing is a small ask, or a nod of approval, I'm hoping for. The Simtons Corner Community Grange Hall is under revitalization right now. And we are looking to try to set up a toll booth at Simtons Corner on May 25th, from noon to 6:00 PM. I've talked with both Randy Gagny and Jason Peasley about doing an event like this. Jason and I have talked at length about how it would work out, because the fire department, as you guys know, they have a toll booth on Route 17 once or twice a year, where they collect many. And Randy Gagny said that he would meet me the day of and help to set up and make sure we had plenty of signage. We already have the safety vest, and he would go over any other safety issues with the volunteers that would be there. The Simtons Corner Grange Hall is celebrating their 95th year. And two years ago, the fire marshal shut us down, so we actually have not been having our suppers there. So we have a handful of things left that we need to do and raise money for to complete, which include a second coat of fire retardant paint on the ceilings, which is going to cost us between $1,200 and $1,500. Sheet rock and paint in the kitchen, which is going to cost us $500 to $700. And a new heating source, which isn't imperative for the summer months, but once we head into the fall and into the winter, we are going to want to have a new heating source, because as of right now, it's just wood-fired heat. And the fire marshal said we cannot, we can no longer use the heating sources that we have. So, we are, our hope is to do this toll booth as a kind of little bit of a kickstart. And then we're going to use that time to hand out flyers to invite people to a barbecue birthday bash in July. So, while Jason said the fire department does not come to you to ask for the permission to do the toll booth, I figured that it would, it would behoove us to do so. We had talked to Bickford, too, and he said we didn't need any permits or anything like that. So we just would like some feedback on the toll booth idea.
If I remember correctly, they didn't ask permission from us, because it's a state highway. And as you'll be doing on a town road, I'd be interested to hear Randy's input.
Randy gave me his endorsement.
Yeah, I don't know whether we have to approve that or not. I know in the past, we have not. I think that Jason did come to us, and my concern always with these events is the safety aspect of it.
Yep.
And I know that there, there is a fairly wide spot.
Yeah, it would be at the four corners.
Because you have to, traffic has to be able to flow, and you can't have people running around. And it's the last thing we would want to have happen at an event like that, is somebody to get hurt or worse. So. I guess I'm comfortable enough with Randy. If he's, if he's comfortable with it and Jason, then I'm comfortable.
Jason and I are right now kind of negotiating, well, first I need to make sure it's okay, but we're negotiating having a safety vehicle there and on-site to help slow things down. And Randy and I talked at length about signage and making sure there's plenty of signage in the, in the proper increments.
Any other issue at that particular intersection? You want to make sure that the traffic still flows.
Yep.
You don't want to have cars backing up, you know, because somebody's standing there having a chat with you about the sign. As much as valuable as that chat might be.
I promise to keep my conversations short.
So.
One at the, at Route 17 and Route 90 doesn't usually block up traffic. They usually, they get people when they're at the stoplight.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that at Route 90, if the light's green, then they're, they just, they stand back and let the traffic flow through. This is a little different, where it's a four-way stop. People have to stop, and then, but then if the traffic starts to build up or whatever, but.
What, how long a time period?
We were hoping to do from noon to 6:00 PM.
It, it might be nice, I know there is double coverage at times at the police department, but if they are going to be there, I'd just as soon not have it incur overtime. Maybe Randy could be there, or, or one of the people that's working, if there are more than one.
And I think, one thing that perhaps Rick, you ought to look into is, if there are going to be more of these events, then I think we probably have to develop a policy, some guidelines, or something like that, as to when they can happen, where they can happen, and what the needs are, and things like that.
It could be, you know, the, when you get into that, it could be that it becomes a issue of that we can't develop a policy that would allow it.
Might be, but I just, it's, you know, we, we probably ought to look into that. I think this is a fine cause, a worthy cause.
Right.
Legacy Rockport is working with Simtons Corner as well to help pull them up by their bootstraps and get them moving. And, and I'm, I'm fine with this particular event, but.
Yep.
You know, that does beg the question, what happens when another organization comes along? So. And thank you for the cleanup.
Did you, did you say the numbers were higher?
4,000 pounds is what, for just our one spring cleanup.
This year?
Just our spring cleanup, this year.
Wow, two times, wow.
And last year, both, the spring and the fall, was close to 5,000. And so while we did add Park Street, which was the first time we had cleaned Park Street, that wasn't, that should not have made up for it.
It's all those cigarette butts.
It's all those, well, that was only 17 and a half pounds, and that wasn't in the, that wasn't in the final tally. So.
Well, it's.
Wow.
I mean, as you were reading that report, I thought, this is wonderful, but it's horrible.
Right.
At the same time.
Right.
And littering is a crime, and I'd like to see our police department write a few tickets for it.
Well.
Let, let Rockport get a reputation. Somebody flicks a cigarette butt out the window, I'm sorry. You know, I'm biased, because I think smoking is a disgusting habit, but if you're going to smoke, then put it out in your car, don't throw it out the window.
Yeah.
Especially this time of the year, when it could cause a fire.
Exactly, well, and the thing is, is that Randy Gagny issued a press release in conjunction with our cleanup.
I saw it.
Right. That said, it's a crime.
Because if you throw your bag with, filled with nips and a receipt from the store you bought it from with the timestamp on it, they can find you and get you in trouble. So don't throw your nips as a package.
Don't throw them out at all.
Right.
I mean, it was, but it was, it's an amazing story. But, as I say, you know, if a policeman, if a police officer observes littering, then I think that a ticket, someone should be written.
Great. And then the last thing, I hear it's an agenda item, I was going to speak to the Alsborough Ferry situation, but thank you for taking that up, and you have my full support and endorsement of sending a letter to the Commissioner of MDOT, but I won't speak to that, because I hear it's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Yes, so, thank you.
Okay.
Marcy, thank you very much for the work you do on behalf of the town. Would you also pass our thanks to Maggie, and hope she's feeling better?
Thank you, will do.
Any further public comment?
Hi, I'm Deborah Hall, and there's just one agenda correction, I think. It states that the candidates' forum starts at 6:30 on Wednesday.
It's six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
We made the correction.
Oh, okay, great, I just wanted to make sure that people watching didn't assume it's 6:30.
Nice for people to hear it twice.
Thanks.
One more time will make it sink in.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, moving on to the town manager's report, and I noticed this week, and we had brought this up at the last meeting, the town manager's report was published in the newspaper this time, and I think that that's going to be an ongoing thing. And so what I've suggested to Rick is that we have all had the town manager's report. If there's anything that Rick feels that he would like to highlight, I'd like to give him the opportunity to do that. And if the board has any particular items that they would like to ask questions of Rick, then I think we can do that. And, and that way, we won't have to have Rick read the whole report verbatim, if that's up to the, if the board concurs with that thought.
Rick doesn't look disappointed.
No, not at all. I've been begging for this for five years.
And the reason I've hesitated on it is because it is important information the townspeople need to know, but I feel now with a more wide distribution that we can perhaps move for this kind of a.
The only thing I have is, is having reviewed it, there wasn't anything from the police department, is there?
I just, just, there was nothing out, other than the normal stuff, so I didn't have anything to put in there.
Anything you want to highlight?
Yeah, a couple of things.
Briefly?
Briefly, yeah. Both Linda and Diane received their certification as GA administrators, I think that was a great thing for us. Also, the library, Ben Augren had a, his wife had a baby girl, I think that's important to note. And also, we've hired a new Opera House manager to replace Terry, Andrew Weber, who works over at Midcoast School of Music. We had 15 applicants for the job, about 15. Six were really well-qualified, it was a tough decision. We came down to, we got it down to three, and it was a, it was a hard decision to make, which is good for us, that we had that many people applying, so. And he, he's due to start here anytime soon and start his training.
He started today.
He started his training today.
Does the board have any particular questions?
I did on the computer server issues. And I tried to follow this as it was sort of going along, and appreciate the work that was done getting us straightened out.
Some of it's going to be discussed.
And we do have that as an agenda item.
Okay, that's right, that's right, okay, good, well, I'll leave it till then, thanks.
On the, am I good? Do I need to lean further, Terry? No, am I good?
You can move the mic.
I don't, thank you. The mainsport pump station replacement.
Uh huh.
What, what do we anticipate? What's the timeline on that?
Boy, I don't know, they're moving along pretty quickly.
I mean, I saw it set up quickly, and I half thought it was something that Stuart Smith was doing at mainsport.
It's, it's the pump station, we've had this in the plan for about three years.
I just didn't know how long we were going to anticipate a more narrow road, some of that stuff.
The construction was supposed to be under a month.
Under, yeah.
So, or a couple weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So probably only another.
From what I went by, it looked like they had the tanks all in and all of that part in. And so, you know, sometimes it's the, the heavy equipment will come out of there, and then it will be just hitching up the pumps and all of that stuff.
And then I had another question, if I, or it's not really a question, but on the fire department stuff, and I can't remember exactly when the North, or the New England Regional Show stuff is, but I got an update from Jason Peasley about him going down to get our new truck.
Oh, yeah.
And I know there's different stop-offs that it makes on its way up here, but I thought, I'd love to tell folks that it'll be displayed prominently at the New England Regional Fire Chiefs, Fire something.
And I think it's just, you remember, Megan, I think it's just before the 1st of July, it's the end of June?
It's going to be delivered here July 2nd.
July 2nd, so it's at the end, it's down there at the end of.
So maybe at the next meeting or something, we can give a better, because it's not too far away, and so if folks wanted to go down and see our new truck, all shiny, and for everyone in New England to.
I don't think it'll be lettered at that point, I think.
I thought that it was going to be lettered at that point.
Oh, was it?
Because they bring it up to like.
It's being delivered right after.
Okay.
After they do the inspection in Massachusetts, they letter it after they've inspected it. And then I thought they were going to drive it over to the regional show thing. But that was it.
Anybody else have any comments? Just a couple for me. Marcy left, but I wanted to highlight the fact that the Styrofoam ordinance is progressing, and we will have it ready for review for the board.
In July.
In July, and that, that means it'll go on the ballot in, in November, so that will progress. And then the other question for Rick has to do with the Heron lease, which I guess we have in our packet.
Yeah, not, you, you don't really need the Heron lease in the packet, but that's been, they've all agreed to the increase in price, plus they agreed to a one-year, an annual increase in cost based on the cost-of-living adjustment.
Okay, good.
For the three-year, standard three-year agreement. If I, just to follow up on that one, which is the boat club lease, as you might imagine, they're concerned about the jump in price, about the jump in cost. I didn't throw anybody under the bus.
Tire tracks on the back of your head there, Doug?
But I did tell them that it was done at the, at the board meeting where we discussed the budget. And so, they wanted to set up a meeting for last week, when I was on, when I was out in Santa Fe, so I'm trying to set up a meeting for this week.
One last, speaking of bids, and, and we talked about the, the mowing bid, is that due?
Yeah, it's going out, it, we, I'm just working on it, the final write-up of it now.
Is there, is there a way to separate the mowing and the landscaping portion of it?
It's all separated. That's the way, that's the way it goes out.
Yeah.
The, one of the changes I'm, I'm looking at is, I did find out the reason. They, they have been separating it out, because without separating it out, it limits the number of people that can bid, because if, if you lumped it all together, some of the smaller contractors couldn't bid on any of the smaller pieces. But one of the things that I'm working on is, at the early part of the year, in the May and June, when the Little League is playing ball, and the grass is growing really quickly, we may need to, to up, you know, change the way the contract is so that the, the field gets mowed a little more often in May and June. And gets, when the grass slows down in July and August, it doesn't get mowed as often. Because it does, right now, you can mow it on one day, and two days later, it looks like it hasn't been mowed. And we, we get complaints that the grass hasn't been mowed, and it was mowed like two or three days later. I mean, it was mowed two or three days earlier. So I'm trying to, I've contacted the, I believe they've sent the, the bid documents to the, the gentleman from the school, I can't remember his name, that we're working with. No, uh.
Oh.
Keith, is it Keith? Yeah, Keith, yeah, who has been helping us.
No, it's Novak.
John?
Yeah, John Novak, yep.
John, he's been awesome.
He has been, very helpful. To, to get language in there that, that gets it mowed a little more often in the beginning part of the year, but once you've hit the end of the Ju, hit, hit the end of June, the grow, the growing slows way down. And so once a week is, is fine, or even once every 10 days is fine.
So there's two different contracts.
There's about eight of them.
Eight, okay, so we do the different parks and everything separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
There's obviously a way we can track accountability and stuff, so, you know, if we're not happy with one park, we can track down.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Just one quick thing, and I think this is maybe a question for you two ladies. We have, and I, sorry that I didn't catch this on agenda changes, but we have under unfinished business to sign the budget validation referendums for you all, but then we have you all later to give an update. Should they give their update? I know we're going to sign it regardless, but do we want to put those two things together?
Signing the warrants is formality, I, I, I'll leave it to the board. I'm perfectly happy to leave it the way it is.
And there's not that much stuff before their presentation, that's the no-fit, the way of bumping them up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the town manager. Next item is under unfinished business to vote to sign the budget validation referendums for MSAD 28 and the Five-Town CSD warrant and notice of election. That's something that we are required to do, we have to sign it, put it on the ballot. Last month, it was on the agenda, which is why it's unfinished business this time. We didn't have one of the districts last month, I can't remember which one, I think it was the CSD. So we decided to wait and sign them all together this month. So I would await a motion here to, to vote to sign those, and then we'll sign them later on.
Give your cheat sheet in front of you.
I don't know, we got a, we didn't get a motion.
Did I get a motion?
No.
Oh, I didn't give you a motion, sorry.
So, please correct me if I'm wrong, I move to place on the warrant.
Just to sign the.
Just to sign.
Red ballot budgetation, the budget validation referendum.
So I'm voting to sign something?
Right. The board, the board, board votes to sign, we re-sign, then we sign it.
Okay, so I vote to sign the budget validation referendum for both the MSAD number 28 and the Five-Town CSD warrant and notice of election for Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. At a specific time, I'm sure.
Just, just, that's from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Gotcha.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mark seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a four to nothing vote, thank you. Okay, on to new business, we have.
Don't you have to do this, did you do both of them at the same time?
We did both of them.
Okay.
Only one's motion covered both of them.
Okay.
We do have a gift to the town to acknowledge, payment in lieu of taxes from Main Media Workshops of $10,479.
I move to accept the payment in lieu of taxes from Main Media College in the amount of $10,479.
Second.
And to send a letter of thanks to them.
Second. I moved in second to accept this fine gift, payment in lieu of taxes. Any discussion at all on that? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a four to nothing vote. And again, as I always say with these, thank you very much to these organizations that choose to contribute to town services when they're not legally required to, it's very gratifying. Okay, next item is to, is to consider a temporary renewal of a liquor license for the Goose River Golf Club. And we have a memo from Linda on this. Apparently, the Goose River Golf Club is going to be applying for a change in their liquor license right now. I believe they sell only beer, and they're going to expand to, to wine and a, and a full spirit license as well. But Linda didn't get the notice in time to schedule a public hearing for this meeting, and she talked, as, you correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, but she talked to the folks at the state and said that we could temporarily extend their current license until they have the ability to get the. until they have the ability to get the uh, material here for the license change, at which time we'll have to have a public hearing and then vote on the new license. And Linda, if you need to add anything, then please feel free.
I think you pretty well covered it.
Okay.
What, uh, I'd like to have a date that we're gonna be.
I think we can do that. And, and I think the plan right now, as Linda, I talked to Linda before the meeting, is that we would have this on our agenda for the
Twenty.
Uh, the twenty-ninth. But in case we don't, um, I, I think the putting a date on it, July first probably.
Yeah, I was thinking the end of June, July first, or.
Just, just to, to cover our bases in case something goes wrong. But I, I do agree that we should have a date on it.
So we're July first or whatever?
I think July first makes sense.
Okay, do you want a motion for that?
Please.
I move we issue a temporary renewal of liquor license to the Goose River Golf Club not to exceed July first, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We also have a um, memo that the police chief has looked into it and has no issues with it. Uh, there have been no problems there. Does anybody have any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a four to nothing vote. Next item. We have Maria Libby and Vice Chair Linda Chilton here this evening to talk to us about the schools, their annual visit, state of the schools, if you will. And I would invite both of you ladies to come on up and let us hear it.
Stay in support from the audience. So, um, when I was asked to do a, the, I'm Maria Libby Superintendent of Schools at the Five Town CSD and MSAD twenty-eight. And when I was asked to come to do a state of the schools report, um, you know, I thought typically we did a budget report. And we kinda did our budget presentation in a slightly condensed version, but I was asked no to a state of the schools. So I expanded it a little bit, really shrunk the budget portion and expanded to just give a general status of where we are in a lot of different areas within the school, the full school districts. So we'll see how it goes. I'm starting with the budgets. So in the SAD budget, our increase to the expense budget without the added debt of the middle school project was one point six nine percent. When we add the middle school project into it, the expense budget increased by seventeen point two five percent. So that ends up with an increase to taxpayers of seventeen point oh nine percent. And in the CSD district, the high school, the increase to the expense budget actually was a decrease of one point two four percent. And that resulted in an increase to taxpayers of one point oh three percent.
Cause like, does that make sense? How do you, cause I, maybe I'm just like, I'm totally looking at it simplistically. So I'm taking seventeen point two five and adding one point six nine and I don't get seventeen point zero nine. What am I missing?
Yeah, well, the, the first two are increases to the expense budget. And one was if we pretended we didn't, weren't gonna build a new middle school.
Right, right, right.
A regular budget. And then the next one is including the middle school, the increase to taxpayers. So the top two lines are only looking at expenses, but when we get the number for the increase to taxpayers, it takes into account revenues. So we, in the SAD, for instance, we got an increase in our state subsidy.
Okay.
So there are all, we have a few more tuition students. So there are a number of things that impact. The taxpayer amount takes into account what happens with our revenues as well.
Thank you.
These, this graph is a chart over time. The um, red one is the change in our expense budget over the past ten years. So the far left kinda starts at zero. I think that first year, we literally had a zero percent increase to our expense budget. And then the highest number is ten percent and then the lowest number is a negative six percent. And the blue line is the change to the taxpayer. So you can particularly see a huge dip in two thousand seventeen with the expense to the taxpayer. And that is because we started getting a huge subsidy from the state for the debt service at the high school. That was a new subsidy they started giving us. So, you know, our expenses stayed pretty flat. But we had a huge dip to taxpayers because of a, an influx of revenue money from the state. So, and then the little chart on the bottom shows our ten-year average to the expense buzz, budget has been one point seven eight percent. And to the taxpayer has been two point four one percent as average amounts over the past ten years.
Was that the subsidy, the, the debt subsidy a one-time thing or, or did we pay off the debt?
No, we, we now get that each year, but it only showed in that year as a significant increase. Because then we use the status quo budget going forward.
Okay.
And so there's not much of a change anymore. That was just a big change that year.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? Are we ready to go on?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. So this is the same graph looking at the SAD budget. And again, the red line shows the art, the change in expenses. So you can see for the past eight years, it's been pretty flat. On the change, percentage change in expenses. The blue line is the change, percentage change to the taxpayers. And that, between eighteen and nineteen, that line's kinda purple, cause they're superimposed. The red and blue lines are right on top of each other. And that is the new middle school project. So that's that, it's both a, an increase in our expenses and an increase to the taxpayers. So you can't even see the red line, cause it's kinda superimposed below that blue line. So again, next year, we'll start with a status quo budget and that change will be in the budget. So you won't see a change again. So this, these are showing changes over time. And we did the nine-year average just so, so we could kinda get a better idea of, without the middle school project, cause that has such a significant impact on the budget. Our average for nine years was point eight percent increase to the expense budget and a one point seven percent increase to the taxpayer. When you add in the middle school project, that ten-year average is two point four four percent to expenses and three point two seven to taxpayers. Still pretty modest, even with the huge increases for next year.
And in terms of real dollars, we're figuring that it'll, we'll have the big jump in dollars this year and then it'll flatten out again.
Then it will flatten out.
To something like the point eight.
Yeah. Hopefully it'll decrease a little bit each year, cause our, you know, our biggest bond payment will be next year. And then each year it will decrease a little bit over time. You know, that competes with, the largest part of our budget are salaries. It's, you know, about seventy, seventy-five percent of our budget. And every year, those teacher salaries go up by, according to the contract. So our budget is always going up because of salaries. So when we get a slight decrease in something, we're always also getting a slight increase. You know, hopefully it will continue flat after this year.
What year is our last high school payment?
Twenty twenty-two. Not too far away at this point.
That's good.
Yep.
Is that seventy-something percent of expenses, does that also take into account like health coverage and benefits?
Yep.
For all?
Yep.
Okay. Cause that's something that I've noticed, if we could try to get a handle on that, maybe the salaries go up. But if we can try to keep the costs of providing health coverage for those folks, flat, which is unrealistic. I get in, a lot of stuff is out of your control, but.
It's all, um, most of it is out of our control. We get, our health insurance increases come from MEA Benefits Health Trust. They tell us what our increase is each year. It does depend on the health of the people in our district. For next year, the SAD was a zero percent increase to our health um, costs, um, health insurance. And it was a six percent increase at the CSD.
Good.
So these are just some of the highlights within the budget. So if we start with the high school, the CSD. This was another huge factor this year for us. We had a decrease in our Midcoast School of Technology payment by a million dollars. That is because the state has changed the way they're funding CTE education. We used to pay for um, all of it basically between the sending towns. And we paid about thirty-seven percent of the share of the cost. And our share was just over a million dollars. So we just paid that every year to Midcoast. This year, the state is taking the funding for all CTE schools off the top bef- and they have their own EPS um, formula. So sending districts aren't paying like they used to. We are paying for the additional costs, which were something on the order of two hundred thousand dollars, is being allocated to the sending towns and sending districts. Our cost this year is on the order of sixty-five thousand dollars, whereas in the past, it's been over a million. So our decrease in that expense was one point oh one eight million dollars for next year. That would've been a huge decrease for us, had it not been for the increase in the debt service that we have. It's coinciding. Those two things coincidentally are happening the same year. And on some level, luckily for us, they're happening the same year. Because we have an increased debt payment for the new Midcoast School of Technology building of almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Fortunately, that's offset by the decrease in the payment. So it's almost a break even for us. When we were expecting the debt was gonna be a really difficult budget scenario for us this year. But then the state changed the way they did the formula, so it worked out pretty well for us.
Was that a twenty-year bond that they did on the tech school or thirty?
I'm pretty sure it's twenty.
Okay.
And then we have some security enhancements that we've budgeted for, for thirty-five thousand dollars. We had a decrease in our state subsidy. Part of that is because we no longer have that million dollar payment for Midcoast. And we, just as a point of interest, we get approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in tuition revenues. That's in students paying tuition to come to our high school. We have a lot of students from St. George who pay tuition. We have a couple from Northport, a couple from Jefferson. And a handful of, tho- those are all districts that I've mentioned so far, who don't have a high school in their district. So their students get to choose which high school they want to attend. In addition to tho- money directly from school districts, we have a handful of students who pay tuition simply cause their parents want their child to go to our high school. And so we have a number of students from neighboring towns who just pay tuition and are enrolled in our high school.
What number of students would that be?
Uh, the private tuition is maybe six or seven students. The other district is probably on the order of forty students.
And that represents the two seventy-five for those forty-five?
Yep, approximately.
And the foreign student program didn't really pan out or?
The, no, we've had difficulty the past few years with the um, F-one students. That's the program by which foreign students pay tuition to come to our schools. Um, a lot of schools have struggled with that. We certainly have. Um, we used that money, it was kind of in a self-contained fund. We used the money that was coming in for that fund to pay a part-time coordinator for that position who we let go this year because we weren't getting the revenue we needed to sustain the program. It also pays for scholarship money. We are hoping if we get one F-one student a year, we can at least continue paying for scholarships for students to travel overseas. And we've, um, we're now paying a much smaller stipend to a teacher to help maintain our ability to um, enroll F-one students, but.
What does it cost for an F-one student, just out of curiosity?
Like what do they pay?
Yeah.
Um, it depends. Every school charges a different amount of money. We were charging about eighteen thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year. And if they needed English as a second language, they got charged like three thousand more. And then on top of that, they had to pay host family, like five hundred dollars a month for the host family. And we project to have about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our capital reserve fund at the end of this year. And that is for major capital expenses that occur at the high school. We try to contribute to that fund. We use it sometimes and we also contribute to it each year from our ops and maintenance budget.
What's the, uh, any idea what the percentage of the St. George students that come, of their total number of high school students? What percentage come to our high school and what percentage go to others?
I mean, this year, it's exceptionally high. Um, I think we're getting maybe fourteen out of eighteen students.
They bust themselves over?
They do.
So like mom and dad drive them or they drive themselves?
Well, no, they have a bu- they have, they have a bus.
Oh, so they get bussed over?
Yeah, like St. George provides a bus and buses them here.
And that relationship is working out well?
Yeah, very well.
Because it's, that's, it's nice to be able to rely on that if that's where the students wanna go.
Yeah, and in fact, we just had an, um, we have this annual eighth grade, um, we call it a state park day. But it's when a- all the eighth grade students from the sending towns find out who their homeroom grouping is going to be for high school. And they do all kinds of um, challenge activities with each other at the state park and have this um, social big lunch um, at the end of it. And this was the first year we, St. George students joined, you know, Camden, Rockport, Hope, Appleton, Lincolnville. Cause they have so many coming. They have as many as some of the classes from Hope, Appleton, Lincolnville.
And we have the capacity to educate those kids.
We do. I have a graph that I'll show you in a minute that shows our demographics. And, you know, I frankly, those students are helping us maintain our numbers.
Absolutely.
So some highlights in the budget for the SAD, we had an increase in our state subsidy. And that's because of added special ed expenses. And the state actually increased the amount they reimburse for special ed expenses. So we're getting a little more money. Obviously, our debt service is increasing quite a bit by over two million dollars. We have a slight decrease in our elementary school debt and then an increase in our middle school debt. My last slide talks about the timeline for the middle school project. The fact is, we don't have, we get our bid, our bond bid opening is May thirtieth. When we'll find out what interest rate we get. We don't know what our exact payment is gonna be, cause it will depend. We have budgeted for what we think is on the high end of what our payment will be. We have about sixty-three thousand dollars budgeted for the MET concept design, the work architects are doing. Legal fees to try to get the whole thing, um, to pass legal muster. What we're trying to do in printing for a referendum again is about sixty-three thousand dollars. We get some tuition revenues at the SAD. We don't get any for, um, you know, other districts don't send us students because everyone has a K-eight system. But we have a number of private, um, again, private placements, parents deciding to send their kids to our school. So we have, we get about a hundred thousand dollars. We also have a few special ed students from neighboring districts who don't pay tuition, but they do pay for their students' special ed costs. That's actually with Hope, Appleton, Lincolnville, we do that. And then we expect our capital reserve balance to be about one point four million dollars because we expect to use one point one million of it for the middle school project. So that will shrink after this year. Any questions on those budget highlights?
Nope.
So here's a graph of our demographics. And this is, you know, over the past five years. Next year is a projected number. It's, it's really hard to know at this point, but we tr- we look at on average, how many students from area private schools enter at the high school level, how many new students we tend to get each year, how many, you know, students from other districts, how many superintendent agreements. So until the start of the year, it's hard to know that exact number, but we're expecting, if, if all things stayed equal, we're expecting about seven hundred and eighteen students next year.
Can I ask a question? How do you determine what your percentage of economically disadvantaged students are? Is it based on just free and reduced lunch?
Yep, that is the definition the state has.
Yeah, don't use white for that bar in the future.
You know, it wasn't, it wasn't white in the, my presentation. I think it was gray, but, you know, note to self, not to use gray here. And this is the SAD twenty-eight graphics. You can see our numbers have been pretty um, consistent and pretty steady. It's unusual. Most districts in the state of Maine have declining enrollments and we've been holding our own.
I'm sorry, can you toggle back, Maria?
Yep.
Thank you. That was, I was, I am, one of the things I think would be interesting, I don't know how, how it works into, you know, the vision that you all have for the school system. But being known as a, a top-notch place for special ed is something. being known as a, a top-notch place for special ed is something that I think would be an interesting goal to try to see it was a realistic thing we could do.
I think that's already the situation.
But if we were, if, if it was, wouldn't we be attracting more and more enrollment for special ed as we built out a robust program? Or are you saying just maintaining the percentage that we have is indicative?
No, we have a lot of students who come to our district because of our special ed programs. And part of that is because we have the enrollments we have. Our budgets tend to pass. We um address needs in ways that a lot of districts don't. If we need personnel, we hire them to address the issues um and meet the needs of students, and that doesn't happen in every district. So we have a lot of students who move here um because of our special ed programming. So, you know, and if you have a really high percentage of your student population, you know, our, our numbers are pretty good right now. It would, it taxes the system. We, I don't think we'd want twenty-five percent special ed. I'm not sure we could afford twenty-five percent special ed, put it that way. We'd have to increase um a lot of staffing that we currently have without changing our numbers a whole lot. So special ed is a very expensive program, um, but we, we already do attract people who come here for the special ed programming.
Do, do all the numbers of total enrollment represent the tuition people from other? So all those years represent?
They're, they're all mixed in there, every one of those years. But, you know, the year back in two thousand and fifteen.
Is that when Saint George started sending?
Yeah, I'm not sure they were there that year.
So it was forty-five high for this year compared to last, or?
Oh, yeah. Every year, we've had the total from Saint George has increased every year, cause the first year, not many seniors and juniors came. So those freshmen probably are seniors now who started with us from Saint George. And then we've had the number entering our freshman class from Saint George has increased every year.
So it's not necessarily people moving here. It's people coming in from other areas to go to school.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of people move here, but we have a lot of people, especially at the K-level, we also have a lot of people move out. So there's a fair amount of transients. Um, but, you know, there are people constantly moving and people constantly leaving. I think this year at the high school, the enrollment has increased by eleven students from October till now. And at the other schools, it's maybe increased five or six. Some years it goes down. It's not a huge factor, cause we lose as well.
Are we sending out any special ed students now?
I don't think we're sending out any special ed. We have a couple of out-of-district, like we have an out-of-district placement.
That's what I meant.
Yes. Um, we do have one out-of-district placement.
Cause those, as I recall, are, that's a cost to the, to the system.
It, it is a um high cost. It's about fifty-six thousand dollars.
So that's, and that's one way to, if we maintain the robust special ed program, then we have fewer of those out-of-district places, which happens.
We have, I mean, we've got a lot going on for special ed. So we've got, you know, kinda your regular, what you would consider special ed classrooms, where kids need a certain level of support. In all three of our schools, we also have a behavior program for kids who are behaviorally challenged. And we also have an autism program in all three schools. So we've got self-contained programs in two specialty areas in addition to just kinda the regular special ed programming. We, we would not be able to program for the students who we send out of district. That's why they get sent out of district. We don't have the level of programming available, nor would it be feasible for any one district to have that level of programming. But we, we-
We send them down to like Mass, right? Or did, that's what I've heard before. Massachusetts has some sort of.
Yeah, we don't send any of those students. There are a number of students who have elected to have their child be enrolled in those schools. But we're not paying those tuitions for those students. So a little bit about athletics. At our high school, we have forty-four varsity teams. We've won a number of recent state championships. Girl soccer is one for the past two years. Sailing has won for the past two years. Boys tennis, maybe, it might be two years for boys tennis as well. And girls skiing has won state championships. We have, and we have eighteen teams at the middle school.
All right, how many years has the, the mountain bike team won though? I mean, like, have they ever lost?
This year, there wasn't a state championship, so it was hard to say that. They've never lost. This would have been the eighteenth year in a row.
That's weird. Why did we not have a state championship?
I can't remember. It, well, it's such a loose um conglomeration of people who ha- who have teams. Yeah, there aren't many schools at all. And they had some other thing this year that it wasn't exactly a state championship. We've got um a lot going on in the arts. We have art and music class. Every student takes art and music kindergarten through eighth grade in our district. In the high school, we have very strong art and music options for students. We have a band program, grades five through twelve. We have a chorus program, grades, and that probably should've sent five through twelve as well. And then we have musical and drama productions available for students in grades six through twelve. And then we've got, you know, youth arts programs, residencies, um, and other things that um are going on on top of all of this. So we have a lot of enrichment in the arts as well. We've got some amazing intercultural travel opportunities for students. This year, the high school has sponsored trips and um, some of them have been exchanges. Germany and China were exchange programs, where the students that our students saw and stayed with in Germany, those students came here as well and stayed with our students. So it was a one-on-one exchange for, you know, ten to fourteen students. And then we also took a cultural trip to France and to the Galapagos Islands. And that happens to be a picture at the top of a volcano on the Galapagos Islands, um, looking down the caldera. I was standing on that caldera. And then the high school, I mean, the middle school has um a trip to Japan each April. We've been doing that for about twenty years now. It's an exchange program as well where the same thing happens, the students travel here and our students travel to Japan. One of the things that we've really been working on in terms of instruction in the, for the past few years is student-centered learning, where there's more student voice and choice in both the content, what they're learning, and the products they produce to demonstrate their learning. And, you know, it also means that students are engaged in doing the work of learning. The teacher's not doing all the work, the students are doing the work. And that can look like project-based learning. There's a lot of that happening at the middle school right now, some at the elementary school. The high school's using the Harkness method, where students really do some in-depth analysis and debate over issues around a table where they have certain roles. There are a lot more personalized plans at the high school, cause we have a lot of students whose educational program is being personalized through independent study projects, internships, mentorships, and things other than the traditional um course experiences. We have about seven internships this year that we started at the high school. We are looking to expand our internship program. We have students right now, um, we have internships with Lyman Morse, Down East, Habitat for Humanity, Hyperion Films, so a bunch of different organizations. So if you're in, you're listening out there um in cyberspace and you run a business and want an intern, get in touch with Jeremy Marks, who's the director of the counseling program at the high school. This is our assessment data from last year. The top is SAD twenty-eight, so it's district-wide, grades three through eight. You can see our proficiency rates, so that, like, for the district, fifty-seven point six percent of students were proficient in English Language Arts. There were fifty-two point six percent of students statewide were proficient in that area. Looking across math, fifty-one point four eight percent of our students compared to thirty-eight point five percent of the state. And in science, eighty-three point eight compared to sixty-two point zero. The bottom table is the high school, and it's the same thing, English, math, and science, the district compared to the state. So I'll just give you a chance to look at that.
It's a co- a comment that, and I don't know whether it extends or not, but I noticed that it seems like the students get a lot better in English at high school and a lot worse at science. Is that a, is that just a one-year snapshot, or is that a trend?
No, I mean, that is a common piece of data for us. I mean, our students do exceptionally well at the high school. Particularly, writing has been the area where that gap between the state and our performance has been the widest in writing in particular. Um, but our students do tend to do really well in English Language Arts at the high school. And science, the department really looked at that data at the high school. And they felt that part of the reason was, the reason the data went down some is because many students hadn't taken any physics prior to taking um the SATs or the state MEAs. Actually, science is the state MEA test. But it includes biology, chemistry, physical science, and students hadn't taken that. So they've changed the sequence so that students get some exposure to physics. And so hopefully, those scores will start to improve a little bit in science. And so, we're looking hard at the K through eight English Language Arts as well. We would like that to be better than it is.
And the numbers for the three through eight, is that the NUIA? Is that how we get those numbers?
No, it's, it's the state assessment, the MEA.
MEAs, for both of them?
For both of them. NUIAs is another test that we do give, that we um have data for. But we typically report out on the state data. I mean, we, we look at NUI data all the time, but on these reports, it's, it's usually the state data that we um share. Cause we don't have a state comparison to the NUIA data.
Oh, gotcha.
We have a national comparison, but it's different. This one, we get a state comparison. It's really helpful.
And how have our numbers been? Cause this is just one snapshot, sixteen, seventeen. Have we been maintaining upward trajectory, downward trajectory?
You know, our scores have dipped some in, at the K-eight level in particular in the past few years, and we're taking a hard look at why that's happening. So I'd say they've dipped some.
Was that across the board or in one spec segment specifically?
No, it's, it's both schools.
No, I meant um English, math, science.
Oh, English and math, not science.
Yeah, cause the science is really high.
And then the final slide is the middle school building project timeline. So we're, the construction bid opening is on Wednesday. The groundbreaking, and I didn't, looks like I didn't put the um the bond bid opening is on May thirtieth. That should've been second. June sixth is the groundbreaking. June twenty-second will be the phase one demolition. July first of next summer will be phase two of the demolition. And that's when we will need to get portables on site for some of those um functions that are going to disappear. This, we can manage the phase one demo without extra classroom space, but we can't manage the phase two demo. Um, then it'll be, there'll be substantial completion of the new building will be in May of twenty twenty. Cause we need to move into the new building and out of the old building before they can tear down the old building. So the new building will be finished in May. We will have about three weeks or so to move in, get, to get out of the old building. And then we'll turn over the old building to the contractor for demolition. And then the, after they demolish that, they'll work on the site work, which is expected to be complete around August twenty-first, giving a two-week leeway window until school opens on September eighth of twenty twenty.
Let's hope it all goes according to plan.
Let's hope it all goes according to plan.
Tight near the end there, but I'm sure you'll do just fine.
Could I just ask one quick question about the enrollment numbers, and I apologize, cause I don't follow this very closely. But, you know, as I looked at the enrollment numbers for the Camden Rockport Middle School, you know, it's low seven hundreds.
That's for the whole district, K through eight.
K through eight, which includes the uh elementary school, I don't know.
Okay, and that explains why the high school numbers are the high six hundreds, I mean.
Yeah, at the K-A level, we're drawing from two towns. But we have nine grade levels, kindergarten plus first through eighth. At the high school, we only have four grade levels, but we're drawing from five towns instead of just two. So the numbers are actually pretty close to one another, which is atypical. A lot of times, we'd expect our high school population to be smaller, but we draw from a lot more than just Camden Rockport. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Uh, Linda, I'll put your name on the agenda. Did you want, have anything to say this evening, or?
No, not really. I'm just, you know, here to represent the school board and to say that we've been working really hard to keep budgets down and things being tight so that we can, you know, probably get this project feeling good financially. And provide the best possible facility for our kids.
To have you up there, sorry.
Hi, thanks. Um, I'm just here representing the school board, and I wanted to say that we've been working really hard to keep the budgets tight, keep them close, make sure we still provide the best possible services for the kids. And um, we're really excited about having a new facility for the middle school. It's gonna be great. And um, we've worked really hard, and I think it's been a wonderful experience for everybody around, so. If you, if you have any questions for me from a school board position?
How do you feel about that?
Wonderful.
Have any uh questions for, for Linda or Maria?
I just had one final one, and I think that you answered it earlier. The high school bonds done in two years?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. Four years.
And that'll make finances a lot better too.
Okay, cause I know that that starts making a lot more things start to make sense. I just thought it was quicker than that. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you both for coming. Uh, we really appreciate the time and it was an excellent presentation. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is to consider approving the use of reserve funds for tennis court repairs at the Marge Jones Recreation Area.
Chairman, where this is over a five, that, over five thousand dollars, the board needs to approve that expenditure. And in, as you noted in my co- comments, we've been looking at this for a while. Uh, we don't have the money to do a total rebuild. That would, that, that's up in the eighty thousand range or more.
If not more.
If not more. Uh, this will uh be a pretty good Band-Aid. Will make the courts playable again. Will prevent them from uh getting water underneath them uh and freezing and thawing and freezing and thawing over the winter. Um, and we'll, you know, we'll make the, the courts uh usable. Because right now, one of the courts is, is not really playable, and the other one has some, some cracking going on. So um, Mike is here to answer any questions, but we're asking for uh approval to spend fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars uh to do the work on the, on the tennis courts.
Did they come out and look at it? Did they, did they happen to mention how awesome it was that I burnt all the weeds out consistently?
Prior to that.
Okay, ah, damn. They spent a lot of time burning those weeds out.
Mark, did you have something?
So this money, the forty-nine thousand, is for the recreation fields, the reserves?
Yeah, the reserve was, was sort of earmarked to re- to replace the tennis courts. Um, and then we dipped into it last year to take care of some baseball field issues and things like that.
Well, where I, where I was going with that is, we squabbled for four thousand dollars to fix a backstop. And we've got a forty-nine thousand dollar reserve that we've dipped into for other things. So it's kinda irritating to think that we wasted several minutes and hours in losing people off the budget committee because of not being able to get four thousand dollars for a uh backstop repair.
Well, we'll be addressing that later in the agenda here. But um, this, this reserve is, is for the Marge Jones Fields, I believe.
Right, so.
So it wouldn't have, wouldn't have been able to be used.
There's a little bit of an odd history with the reserve account with this. So the rec- reserve account was set up kind of with the intent to be for the tennis courts. When I was trying to get money for Marge Jones, I couldn't find any language that said it was expressly for the tennis courts. So there's only been a very brief period of time since we've decoupled what we thought was for the tennis courts to be more recreational stuff. So though you're totally accurate, and that they were squabbling over it, we'd only recently started to segregate out some things to, to try to get away from, hey, that, that money's for the tennis courts. No, it should be for a backstop. Because we hadn't defined that earlier.
When I read it, Recreation Reserve, it doesn't say tennis courts, but-
When I read it, Recreation Reserve, it doesn't say tennis courts, but
that was the history of it. And I guess the question I have is um and Rick's comments, it says it's gonna buy us eight to ten years. So then my comment to that, I guess, would be, well, then we need to get ourselves on a path funding the reserve so that in the eight to ten years, we have the money to replace those courts.
In eight, in eight to ten more years, the, the fencing, you know, as in cement, those are already pushing up through some. So in eight to ten years, those will be a huge problem.
So I think when we do the budget next year, we're gonna have to sort of recalibrate, as the GPS will say for a new deadline.
The tennis courts and, and the basketball court down there are probably the single biggest expense. Um, because in order to do it, you have to take down the fencing and um replace the fencing and get in there and totally re- rebuild the whole thing. And we're still, you know, the way, at the rate we're going, we're chasing a problem that's moving away from us. So this will at least uh, at least allow the courts to be playable um again, and get them looking good and playable.
Would it, I mean, we're at forty-nine. You say it's, somebody said it was around eighty thousand to do it correctly.
Yep, that, that bid was from like five, five or plus years ago.
I expect you're gonna be close to a hundred.
Well, I'm just wondering whether we.
You know, one thing I'll throw out there is that within, I, I would estimate to be two miles or so of our tennis courts, there's probably a dozen other tennis courts. I'm not saying that we shouldn't invest in our own tennis courts, but as far as would the community still have tennis courts if we happen to not make the decision to redo it in eight years or something like that? There, there are a lot of tennis courts around, but just throwing that out there.
Well, this, and I wanna chime in too a little bit. You know, I don't, I don't have a problem with our tennis court that's in disrepair, and we should repair it and all of that. But like Mark, I sort of have an issue with the whole process here. You know, I'm not quite sure, you know, this kind of came in from left field. I know we've talked about it, but you're talking sixteen thousand bucks. Now, remember having some discussion in the past, I think I asked the question with um the tennis courts at the high school, are, are, is the public welcome to use those when they're not in use for for, you know, an event?
I don't believe that they are. I don't think they are.
Well, why would they not be if they're there and they're empty?
It's one of the things that's been an interesting conversation with the recreation community is that it is sometimes difficult to gain access to the public school system's recreational infrastructure, including the bits that don't get locked up. So it's not like the basketball court, we gotta unlock a door, and then all of a sudden you got access to the whole school or portions of it. It's difficult just to get access to their track, their playing fields, their tennis courts, all the outdoor stuff. And I don't have a good answer for you.
So, alright, so I don't wanna go there. That's kind of a different issue. But let me ask this then. So, you know, why did we spend hours talking about four thousand dollars to fix the, some of the backstop?
As Ken said, it's this, this, this reserve fund. You know, Owen and I went back and forth a little bit about it, but it was specific. It's for Mar- for the Marge Jones facility. And it has, historically, had always been budget after budget after budget year. It was discussed that it was to, it was to replace the tennis courts. Owen is correct. It does, the language on the title says it's for the, you know, it's, it's been specific. It was for Marge Jones, for the repair and maintenance of the Marge Jones facility. And um
Actually, is that, are you, cause we could use some of that for the RES. Was it specific to Marge Jones? I don't really remember.
Well, it's written up as Recreation Reserve.
Well, it's just, we'd have to look at the specific purpose of it. We have a list.
And I don't remember putting any money, or being asked to put any money into this particular reserve this year.
I don't think, I don't remember. There is money going in.
No, I thought we did. We did something. Yeah, something. It wasn't a ton, but we did something.
You know, and again, um, yeah, the, the.
Sorry, I just wanna, so the forty-nine that's there, does that include what we're going to be putting in this year? What's, what's it going to be our total?
Forty-nine thousand is what our balance is now.
Not with that.
Well, you know, in the grand scheme of things, if it passes, which in all likelihood it will, what is the number we're putting in there?
It was like two thousand dollars. It was some small ridiculous amount.
Well, that's why I made the comment I did, is if we do this, and I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, we, we don't wanna have our infrastructure capped up, then I think starting next year, we have to sort of relook at that whole reserve and decide, what do we wanna use this reserve for, and how do we need to fund it in order to accomplish that?
Right, right, but you know, right here, right now. So could this money be used to repair the irrigation system? To buy the other half of the seed that they wanted, the other half of the fertilizer they wanted?
I don't see why.
Well, you, you, I, you'd really not want to use it for maintenance, you know, for buying seed and something that you have to do every year. But for a cap, for an.
We have maintenance lines that we, that we fund.
I'm guessing if we had a major catastrophe with the irrigation system and we needed to repair it, we would look to this.
I'd like to go out on a limb and just say that if Steve Beveridge were here, he'd give you a little history, but I remember fifty thousand dollars.
I think he'd say it was for the tennis courts.
No, fifty thousand dollars was the number that he originally gave us probably five to seven years ago.
To fix a tennis court?
To fix a tennis court. So here we are, five to seven years later, still talking about it. So, and it's more than doubled the cost.
And it's, we're chasing a number that's going away from us. It's getting more expensive every year.
And I'll definitely take ownership for lessening some of the money that was in that reserve account. Because, I mean, I clawed and clawed and clawed to get money for the Marge Jones Fields. And we, I mean, we took twenty-two, was it twenty-two thousand or something like that?
Wasn't that much?
Yeah, it was twenty-one or twenty-two thousand. Um, I think maybe some of that was actually existing budgeted money compiled with some of the reserve money as well. But the majority, the bulk of it, like probably twenty thousand or maybe just a little under, came from that reserve account.
You made a good case.
So does anybody wanna make a motion on this item?
Um, the only, the last question that I have is um, so I've been following a lot of this, cause I'm doing the rec stuff. I thought that the previous conversations I'd had was attempting to do similar thing like we did to the basketball courts to the tennis courts, which was substantially less expensive than this. However, I mean, I was looking at the tennis, at the basketball courts, and you're already starting to see some of that kind of hairline cracks reform back in the ones we sealed. So I'm not opposed to this, but um are we highly confident that this is, this is money well spent?
As good as we can be. I mean, nobody knows what, you know, frost will do. That this, this fix has a membrane that's gonna go like over the cracks, or the crack will be sealed. Then there's another piece that goes over the actual ceiling part, and then the whole court will be repainted. So, you know, the other, the other option would be, you know, like, like we did at the basketball court, but that would probably be every year we'd spend.
Every year, putting another twelve hundred into it, twelve hundred into it.
So we have to make a conscientious effort for the next four years to put at least fifteen thousand a year into a reserve.
Well, whatever, this, this is gonna last us eight to ten years.
Well, in eight to ten years from now, it's gonna cost a hundred and fifty thousand to fix it.
Well, whatever, yeah.
Right. No, it's not whatever. I'm just trying to figure out, we can't keep.
I think we have to make, we have to make an eight to ten year plan on the reserve fund. That's what, that's what this is telling me. This is gonna last eight to ten years.
I would sooner think five years, so that way you can avoid.
Well, maybe we'll have to, that, that's a budget decision for next year. But yes, we do have to, we have to make a plan of the reserve fund.
How heavily are the courts used? That's a, now, that's a, that's a trick question.
Not very much now, because they're so bad.
Bad shape. I knew someone was gonna say that. And we have a lot of complaints about people that don't play there, cause of the.
How would I see, if I don't, if I don't see people playing, people more than one person playing. I do see a lot, though, they'll set up on the one uh half of a court that doesn't have any cracks, and that's the half of the court that has just the
The wall?
The, and they'll hit back and by themselves, they'll hit it against the chain link fence with the board there. And that's used quite a bit. If I don't see two people playing, there's usually someone sitting there pounding it.
Think that comes in waves as a group, you know, that gets together and they'll stop playing some, and then it drops off some, and it goes.
And I have seen adults down playing at the high school.
You have?
Yep. On my occasional rides through.
I'm not sure that they, they actively go and chase people out.
Right.
But they don't actively ask, tell, tell folks that, come on down.
Well, I think they have issues like if school isn't session, even if it's not being used, they probably don't want people come and go and stuff like that. A school safety issue.
So if, if we were to decide not to do this, is the court in such a condition that it would be hazardous for someone to play, and we should not allow it?
Good chance of an ankle roll.
Yeah, it's getting to that.
In one side of the court.
I'm just asking if we decided not to.
If, if the court was, I won't say condemned, but if you didn't touch it, and you were still gonna leave it open, I would probably go with the twelve hundred bucks just to seal that hole and say it is what it is and.
Cause for twelve hundred bucks or so, we can fill the crack to the point where you're not gonna roll your ankle. But it is gonna affect your ball if your ball hits on that crack. And we're gonna have to do the same thing the year after that, and the same thing the year after that, and then probably a little bit more, cause we gotta remove all that junk to put new junk in. But it is, it's a, if you're, if you're thinking about trying to.
I'm just asking a question. If we decide not to do it, should we close it?
No, I would recommend the twelve hundred, twelve hundred buck.
Well, I didn't even know about the twelve hundred until thirty seconds ago, so.
That sounds like it, it patches it, but it doesn't make them very playable.
It's fine, it seems to be fine with the basketball courts, cause the basketball's so much bigger. That if you bounce on where we fixed a crack, it doesn't really affect what the big ball does, but a tennis ball, it will affect the roll of a tennis ball.
Well, I wanna get back to my process question, and, you know, I understand there's different funds here and there and everything, but you know, so this shows up on our agenda tonight. But again, I get back to, you know, backstops at the RES site, the irrigation system. You know, other things that needed attention. I just don't quite, I mean, why did this rise to the top? After all the discussions we've been having.
We have been talking about it for several years. The, the board.
Yeah, well, I've been on it for a year now, and I, I know it's been out there as an issue, but why tonight does this show up?
Well, because it had, if it wasn't for the fact that it was over five thousand dollars, it wouldn't show up. But because it's over five thousand dollars, the board needs to approve it.
Well, I haven't.
That's what he's saying is, is how come it didn't come up in March? Or why doesn't it come up in July, or why tonight? That's the.
You know, when I, when I, when I think back to the budget process, and, you know, the dickering around we did over such small amounts of money. And, you know, there are legitimate recreational needs out there. There's no question about it. But somehow, you know, this flew under the whole radar screen, and then it shows up tonight for sixteen thousand bucks. And, you know, like I say, we were dickering, you know, for a thousand bucks.
It's also so I will note that that, that last budget that we went through was probably my first budget of doing that much amount of dickling. So um, I mean, that was, that was slightly new, but this money is all coming from existing budget money.
Reserves.
Reserves that we already have allocated in previous years. I will, I will agree that um, you know, I wasn't quite aware of this level of restoration to it. I mean, we'd had a lot of conversations about, okay, what are we gonna do? What's affordable? We know we can't rebuild the whole thing. But I think maybe Doug, as part of the process, this is a suggested motion on an item. If you want to, I mean, we do have a season to try to catch. But if you have substantive concerns, and you have some questions that you want raised, or looking at quotes for some of the just crack fillers like we did over the basketball courts, there's nothing that says you can't ask for it to be put off to next month to get some more information, to get yourself to be comfortable or or uncomfortable with it, and whatever the information presents. So as, as far as the process, it doesn't necessarily alarm me that this showed up. I expect you all to be keeping track of this stuff and then bringing it to us when you, you, you think we should take action, Rick and Mike, and that's great. But as part of our process, they bring stuff like this, and we go, no, we're, we'll, we'll take it up next month. We got some questions.
That's fine.
Just a.
Or I'm happy to do it now, but if, if.
Just a.
Doug and others are uncomfortable.
Just a thought, because I mean, you know, we're, we're taking, we're dipping into the money, you know, a third of what we have, basically. I mean, if we were to put the, the twelve hundred dollar fix for four years, forty-eight hundred, take it off the top of the fifty-one or whatever we're gonna have in our reserve now, and for the next three years, put in fifteen thousand. So you'll have ninety-two thou- ninety to ninety-two thousand in three years. In the upcoming three years, for a complete fix instead of five to eight years out.
You would also have to ensure that that fifteen thousand doesn't show up in the budget.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna say, is that those contributions to reserve funds are easy fodder during the budget process to say, well, let's, let's keep the millwright down. And let's, let's shave that down somewhat, and that's what has happened over.
Cause we were putting about ten thousand bucks a year in there. And it was, and it, for, for a little bit of history, whenever we put the ten thousand dollars in, the discussion was always because we're gonna, we get, we need to replace the tennis courts. And why is it so, why is it so high? It was always because the tennis courts are gonna need to be replaced. And um, you know, they're getting to that, that point. This is, this is a fix. It's not replacing the tennis courts.
And I would, I would maybe be more inclined to what Mark's talking about, the, trying to, to scab along with the kind of twelve hundred to twelve hundred. But, and I've taken quite a few looks at them. The cracks in the tennis courts are, I would guesstimate, the max, the biggest crack in the basketball court versus the biggest crack in the tennis court. It's probably a good three quarters of an inch bigger on the biggest crack in the tennis court than the biggest crack in the basketball court. So if they were all hairline cracks, and it, and it was just that we saw a little bit of a, a little wavy black line, I would maybe be advocating for the twelve hundred buck, drizzle it down. But with the sport itself and the size of those cracks, which is why I've been burning the weeds out. I don't want those cracks to widen out any bigger than they already are. This would be the, in my opinion, the smarter route to go, but I'm not opposed to tableing it if Doug's concerned.
What we're, if you're looking at the two options, you're considering, okay, twelve hundred dollars for four years, like you say. Uh, and then putting a lot of money in the reserve account and hoping that the, the budget committee in the select board votes to put that extra money in the reserve account. Versus taking the money out of the reserve account now to, to do this, this sixteen thousand dollar fix. And then, again, having to make a plan to replenish the reserve, but having a longer period of time to do it. And the difference between those two, let me finish, is the fact that over the, over the four-year period, you get a much better playable court. Because I'm getting, I think the twelve hundred dollar fix is, while it's gonna make the court safe, it's not gonna make them terribly attractive to people who wanna play.
And, and the cost, if we were to do it today, is around eighty to a hundred, or?
Yeah, closer to a hundred, I would suspect at this point.
In, in the five to seven years that Steve had originally mentioned, fifty thousand, we've gone up to a hundred. So if we wait eight to ten more years to do it, we're gonna be where? And how much are we gonna have to put in every year?
Well, let's say it's ten years, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it's a hundred now, I mean.
One of the factors is.
I had always ever, I had always heard eighty thousand dollars.
Steve put fifty in ages ago.
Yeah, but I think the ages was the key.
Well, I'm thinking seven years-ish.
And one of the factors is that the fencing all has to come down in order for them to get the stuff.
Well, I think, I mean, let's, I think we've kind of beat this to death. Let's make a decision on this. Do we, do people wanna table it or whatever?
I'll make a motion, and if it, oh, wait. Can we bring it back up next month if the motion fails? Do you want more time, Doug? I don't, I don't have to make a motion.
Well, you can make a motion, if the motion fails, then, then we can.
Next month. But if you're telling me that you're gonna vote against it, and you just want some more time, then I won't even make the motion.
It's not, it doesn't, it's not gonna matter to us to get it, getting it done, I don't think.
Well, I'm trying to look how long.
If you wanna, if you want more time.
How long did they say it was gonna take them to do the work? Cause I'm only, I'm curious about catching the season. We're starting to get into.
Yeah, I don't remember what the length of time. I expect they'll be there for, you know, four days or something.
Well, cause it does say three coats of this, and I'm, I'm guessing they're gonna have to let it cure between coats.
But just the thing I'm sort of wrestling with is, you know, do the townspeople of Rockport want to have tennis courts? That tend to be pretty expensive. I don't, does Camden have tennis courts?
No, they all, I actually see a lot of Camden people playing on our tennis. No, they all, I actually see a lot of Camden people playing on our town.
Doesn't they do something with the snow bowl?
If they, they're, if, those have gotta be in worse shape than ours.
I think they did some repairs last, the end of last summer, I believe.
Did they?
That's right. They're over there.
But that's why they come down.
But they were in rough shape and people were coming over here.
Must've been proud of the old. Well, they say, I'd like to move the item forward one way or the other, or not, but we spent a lot of time on it, so. I mean, I'm, this seems, I'm, I'm buying eight to ten years. To me, seems worth it. That's just my comment to me. And that gives us time to develop a plan.
I'm moved to authorize the expenditure of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars out of the recreation reserve for the purpose of the proposed repair of the Marge Jones tennis courts.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed. Okay, that's a four to nothing vote. Thank you for a good discussion. Next item is here, a report on recent computer issues. Consider using reserve funds. There it is again.
Again.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I wanna go back.
You know, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time. It's all on my manager's comments and I don't wanna rehash everything. But one of the reasons, again, this is here for you, is that in order for us to make the recommended repairs that we need to do. We're gonna have to dig into reserve funds. And so Megan and Gus are here to basically answer questions, but one of the things is. You know, what we went through is not unheard of. A lot of people are going through it. Thankfully Gus, Gus and Mike got us out of it very well. A lot of people are surprised that we were able to get all of our data back. We didn't have to pay the ransom, which I would've gladly paid. But I think for Gus, it was more of a challenge. He didn't want them to win and, and they didn't. But it means that we're facing some, some changes we have to make. The, the old system of, our, our, our previous plan of how we were gonna back up our data and how we were gonna manage our email and backing up data and all of that isn't, isn't gonna be working, isn't gonna work for us in the future. As a matter of fact, the conference I just went to, there was a whole section on data security and how, from an insurance perspective, how that is gonna affect municipalities going forward. And the whole idea was moving us away from the onsite servers or remote servers to, to a cloud server as a means of dealing with data security. Because it is a huge problem. So I'm gonna ask Gus and Megan to come up and talk about, you know, what the plan is for what they think we need to be doing to get us secure. Because the way, the way we are now, we're, we're as secure as we can be, but it's, it's not gonna get any better, you know. I think Gus can keep us fairly secure right now, but, and from what I heard this over the past week, it's gonna get more and more difficult for us going forward. So we need to do something here, so.
Wait, why, why, why do we know it's going to be more and more difficult?
Because hackers and all.
Do we now have target on our back?
No, no, it's just. Just in general.
Just in general. I thought it was specific to us. I'm gonna freak out now.
No, just in, for municipalities.
Everyone has a target on their back.
Yeah. Every, everyone has a target on their back. And it's, it's becoming harder and harder for tech people to keep up. So Gus.
I am Gus Natali and I am the IT guy for the town of Rockport and.
Superheroes.
So Rick, one of, I just wanna make this clear. I didn't, it wasn't out of, you know. The reason that we didn't pay the ransom is it was also gonna take a while to get the Bitcoin and that would've meant two weeks of the town being down while we were waiting for Bitcoin and to get the decrypter from the hackers. So that was one of the reasons why we, another reason we didn't let that happen. So I, do you have, does.
They have them.
You guys have any questions on any of that information that I sent, sent over to you?
Can you just give them a brief explanation of what these things are and what it means?
The things on the, on the information that I had sent over?
Office three six, yeah.
Okay, so the Office three sixty-five. Currently, we are hosting email in-house, which is not common practice anymore. For the most part, for security and, and uptime and network resources. Most people will host that offsite. Even though it does cost more upfront, there, there's less overhead for the, the network resources as well as the IT department. So we are looking at a fairly high number for, or I think high number for, compared to what you're spending now for hosting the email offsite, but there's a lot of benefits to that as well. One of those benefits with the package that we're looking at for the hosted email is that it will also keep all of the employees at the town with current versions of Microsoft Office products. As well as guarantee, you know, backup is, is happening in the cloud as well. We're not dealing with that, all of those resources local to the network. The other thing that we, so I guess what we, what we had happen a month ago was we, we had two situations that came up. One was with a wireless, the public wireless network that we ended up locking down because the, that event was, put the network, basically blacklisted the town's email. Because it's, the way that that was designed, it's all behind the same internet connection. So somebody on the network, public what network, we're assuming, had a virus on their computer which kept blacklisting the town's email address, which is why you guys were all getting those bounce backs. And that happened about a week before, a little more than a week before we got the big virus. So currently, the, the town's wireless network is locked down to being a private network only for town employees. And the public network has been shut off until we come up with a new plan, which I think we're, we're already in the works of doing that. And the other thing that we, we have been, this is, you know, another suggestion that I had been, has been brought up a while ago was the offsite backup. We currently have makeshift offsite backup. So we have a local backup at the town office and then the offsite backup is backing up to the police department basement. The issue that we had with this virus that hit us is it was a network back, a network virus. It spread across the entire network. It affected our backups at the town office and because of our backups were on the network at the police department, they also affected that. So we, it was a really, it was, it was a lot of work recovering data. If we move all of our backups to the cloud, in an event like this, we'll be able to recover the information without as much work. It may be two days of downtime versus.
We probably had.
We, we really only had two days downtime, but I worked a hundred hours over that weekend.
Between you and Mike.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing any cost numbers here. We don't have a, a cost number or a suggested motion for reserve. Are we not there yet or?
We do have the, so Megan, what did we, what did we say?
Twelve thousand.
Was it fifty users we kind of calculated? Okay, so we, at fifty users, if we paid an annual subscription to the Office three sixty-five, it would be twelve dollars and fifty cents per.
Okay, yeah, I was, I see that. I was looking for more of an aggregate cost number.
One of the things.
Ninety-three hundred for the year.
Right. One of the things, we, we didn't have an exact cost, exact cost at this point. We'll, I think, Megan, you correct me if I'm wrong, we'll expend the money, but we'll need your approval to.
Oh, cause we're gonna go over what's in the reserve.
Right, and we'll need, well, you won't go over in the reserve, but you'll have to replenish it out using reserve.
Okay, so you're not looking for a, a motion tonight to how much to transfer from the reserve?
I just need you to know that this is, if we're gonna move forward with this and then when we get a number, you'll have to transfer it from the reserve, correct Megan?
So the ninety-three hundred a year, is that the, just the Office three sixty-five email piece?
Right, and what we would do with the email is for town employees, they would get the higher cost version so that we would all have updated Microsoft products. And then for our committee users, select board users and things like that, we would get the more basic one, which isn't necessarily as heavy, but those committees don't need that heavy piece either.
There is an additional cost per user for, for archiving, which is a compliance thing, I think it's required for the town.
So the, the thing is, is that we, I could move forward with this, we could move forward with this here, but if it means we have to tap into the reserve funds, which we probably will have to tap into the reserve funds for quite a bit of it. You need to know about it before we go ahead and we'll come back, we come back with another request to use reserve funds for that expenditure, Megan?
Right, I'm hoping that we will be able to cover the difference with making some budget adjustments this year. I'm hoping, because we have so many computers within the town, if we go off our replacement schedule now, it's gonna throw us a year or more off. We're also looking at hosting more of our things outside, like this year in the budget, Carrie requested that we buy a vision server to host that information here. I think we've decided to now host that on the cloud with them. When Trio goes to Trio Web, we'll be hosting that on the web too and not in-house. And that will again protect us from something like this happening. If we do get hit with a virus, it's not gonna attack us.
So I, I've got a question just to help perhaps save us from having to address this next month or next week. What exactly do you think is gonna be a dollar value?
We don't, I don't know.
I mean, ten, ten thousand or less?
It was twenty-something thousand, was it? It was in the range of twenty-plus thousand.
Yeah, it was.
For the offsite storage and for the email.
The offsite storage.
And where I was going with that is if we could authorize tonight for you to spend up to.
Up to, that's fine.
A number. And then if you feel comfortable that that's gonna cover it, then we don't have to address it next month.
We don't have that much in the reserve, so you can't, I mean, you could say overexpend the budget. You could authorize us to overexpend the budget and I'm hoping that we can make up the difference with cutting back in some other departments and maybe not buying things.
When we meet on the twenty-ninth, will you have more information by then or is it, that's gonna be too soon?
I had planned on having it for today, but we're having problems with Trio, on Trio's end, so I haven't been able to get in Trio for two days.
Two weeks isn't gonna make a difference. We could just, maybe just wait till then, but I, I wanna make sure that we understand. The other question I have is how much of this is an ongoing annual expense and how much of it is a one-time deal?
It's, it's all, well, okay, so the wireless part of it is a one-time deal until it's obsolete. It is an annual expense for our Office three sixty-five. That will be a continued every year, the same price unless their prices go up. As far as the backup solutions, we, I've got a, and I can get these numbers to you, but I did finally get the quotes today for what it would cost. It's gonna be about eleven hundred dollars to get the perpetual license for the backup software. And then going forward, it will be around three hundreds. It'll be three hundred and six dollars for the renewals after that. And depending on how much we get off of our servers, we'll also, you know, that, it all depends on how much data we're gonna need for an offsite backup. There are a few promotions going on with the, the cloud backup solutions right now so that we could, you know, if we locked into something now with even a two, doing a two-year, we're looking, you know, for the high end of the, would be five terabytes and that would be sixty-six hundred, a little over sixty-six hundred dollars a year. But if we move a lot of those other services off, if we move some of these other services into the cloud, we'll be spending the money there, but we can lower the cost of what we need to back up because we won't need as much space.
All right, a couple of comments. First, Gus, thank you very much for the work you did. It's much appreciated. Can you give us an idea of how much it did cost though to fix this problem? I mean, I'm sure he didn't do it out of the goodness of his heart.
Megan has, it's.
Just the ballpark.
It's in the vicinity of ten to twelve?
Uh, we're at about nine thousand right now. There's still some work that has been done since we paid the last invoice. Plus, there's some work that we still need to get done.
We have to pay, and we paid for Mike too, from county.
That's included in that.
Give him an attaboy.
How much, how much was the ransom?
A thousand.
Okay. And this is very helpful, Gus's sort of proposal, but, you know, I don't know how many computers we have and whatnot. So I would like to ask that Megan and Rick sort of look at how many computers we have, pick what we need and then put it into a spreadsheet form. So that it's kind of easy to look at and see what's costing us, you know, what's a one-time cost, what's a recurring cost. That would be very helpful to me to understand, you know, what we're being asked. And in the meantime, yeah, twenty thousand to do whatever we need to do.
I know, I'm sorry, I was wrong. That, that's six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. That was for two years.
Which is, see, I need to have that in the spreadsheet.
I will give that to you.
As, as Megan said, one of the challenges we, we've had is Trio has been down since Friday.
Friday.
We've had a problem with Trio now, unrelated, I believe.
Oh, it's completely unrelated.
It's on their end, not ours.
But, so she hasn't been able to get into Trio to kind of do, to do some of the number crunching to see exactly how much we're asking for potentially out of the reserve. Cause frankly, the more we can not spend out of the reserve, the better.
And I think too.
Our goal is to spend as little as possible out of the reserve.
And I think too, the annual increase isn't gonna be as much as it sounds because if we're paying for a license for the Microsoft suite, it's what, five or six hundred dollars for one person? So you're talking about ninety-three hundred dollars for everything for all employees in the town, which when you look at all of our computers, I think that that will really be a costly.
If you add it all, aggregate it, add it all up.
Well, and don't forget about, you've, you've got your desktop computer, a laptop. Rick, you've got a desktop, a laptop. There are other people who have those as well who have licenses for each.
Random question. All the computers are, are in our police cruisers.
Yes.
What happens?
They are, they, they do not have any Office applications on them.
Did they get affected as well?
No, they did not. No.
That's how Megan did the payroll. She went out and do a police cruiser.
That's right. We got creative.
But you were in the backseat.
No, I was.
Well, I think what, what we need to do as a board, I think by right now, by sort of a nod of the head is to instruct Rick to sort of go on and continue this discussion. I, I don't think there's any question that we have to do this, you know, we're dependent on this data.
And, yeah, the, the technology, I was also at the technology conference that they were at and it was just all of these, these are things that I had been recommending over the last few years and it was really good to have these.
We were really unfortunate in the fact that it hit us tax week and it really shows how crippling it is to us to not be able to process payments, register vehicles, how much we're dependent on this software. And we really need to make sure that we're protecting ourselves as much as possible.
One of the workshops I went to when I was in Santa Fe was on, was on crisis management for, basically an issue just like this is the equivalent to the MMA for North Carolina. Which handles all of the insurance, workers' comp, liability insurance. That building burned down to the ground. And so all of their computers, all of their laptops, all of their files, everything burned down. Everything was on, was stored in the cloud and they were back up and running within about two and a half days. And able to serve people. I mean, it wasn't easy. But the other thing I got out of that, which we'll start working on, is having a disaster recovery plan for what happens if the worst happens? And, you know, how do we recover? You know, how do we get back up and running? What do we do? So we'll, that'll be a plan we'll start working on.
Okay. Well, I think we can move this on. What I'll do is I'll put it on the. Okay, well, I think we can move this on, what I'll do is I'll put it on the agenda for the twenty-ninth, and, and see where we are at that point, but I think allowing you guys to-
Yeah.
To move forward, and even if you don't have the final product on, we'll have more information by then, and, uh, just to stay on top of it, okay? Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is-
Thank you.
Thank you, Gus, thank you very much, and thanks to, before we move off this topic, Megan mentioned tax week, and I wanna say thanks to Linda and her office, cause they had, they were pulling their hair out, but they did a great job dealing with people that week. We had to worry about, you know, what happens if people don't pay it, their taxes are late, and it was a stressful time, I know, and, and you guys handled it very well. Consider accepting a proposal to remove the home on town-owned property at six forty-seven Rockland Street.
Well, so we can get on the motion for talking about it. I move we approve the proposal from David Herrick to move the home and salvage the building of six forty-seven Rockland Street for the price of one dollar.
Second.
The move is seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Yep. And sees how Mike's here. Mike, have you got enough junk gravel up behind your place that you can't take four or five trucks up there, rather than Dave putting?
Yeah, I-
I mean, I, yeah, no.
Thank you.
I mean, I, there's a lot of-
I've, I've talked to Dave some, and he's willing, you know, to-
Participate and help and fill this hole in.
We just found some more today, too.
The big thing you could do is make sure you had a big machine there.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have a machine there when, when they're doing some of the work, and some of the plan is probably pull the existing foundation into the deeper end of the hole, bring some material that we've got at Public Works, fill the hole so it's shaped into somewhat the lawn, and-
Yeah, no, I was just saying, because it says you will break up the foundation and fill the cellar hole, and I'm thinking-
Yeah, we've got, we, we do have some material, and he and I have talked about that some.
No, I think it's a-
Cause we are, we are occasionally looking at, for places to get rid of material.
Okay, any further discussion? We've talked about this before, it seems to be a, a good way to, was there a second on that?
Yes, I believe so.
All right. So it seems to be a good way to, to get the house that we don't want out of there, and, and to perhaps have it repurposed and useful use.
Tax rolls.
Okay, if no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a four to nothing vote. Okay, next item, consider the disposition of the, uh, funds remaining from the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration. Uh, we have a, uh, a note from the one hundred and twenty-fifth committee about, uh, the monies left in that account, about twenty-six thousand, uh, and different ways to, uh, deal with it. So I would wait a motion here.
Good, good, well.
I move to approve the transfer of the one twenty-fifth anniversary celebration funds to the Legacy Rockport account with the amounts and conditions as described in the letter from the committee.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, we have, uh, Linda and Charlton here, from, Linda from both the one twenty-fifth and the Legacy Rockport, and Charlton from Legacy Rockport as well, if, if we have any questions for those folks.
I have a general question, whose money is this?
Our money.
Yeah, who's our?
Well, it was, it was raised with, um, through the efforts of the committee, the, um-
Right, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And-
It's town money.
It is town money, so it, it's some, somewhere in our budget, it shows up in an account.
It doesn't show up in our budget.
A line.
It's on the trial balance, and it's on line, it doesn't show up in the budget.
It, it's on the what?
Trial balance.
Trial balance.
So our financial statement, it does show up on our financial statements, but it's not part of the budget.
How many other items do we have that meet that same criteria?
We do?
Really?
Yeah, we have several.
Imagine that.
That's a future agenda item.
Yes, I would say so.
Maybe for the twenty-ninth, we could have a list of those said.
Yeah, what other ones do we have, off the top of your head?
Is that something we could have for the twenty-ninth?
Well, Legacy Rockport is one.
Yeah, like, yeah, Legacy Rockport is one.
Legacy Rockport is one.
The library is on our financial statements.
But that doesn't really answer the question though, cause that's not really, look, is it our money? You know, is it the select board's money?
Cause it was donated to support the one hundred and twenty-fifth celebration.
Right, so the, the funds in the one twenty-fifth account were raised with the intention to fund the events that they did for the Rockport one twenty-fifth, and then at the end, buy a projector or something for the harbor, is that right, Linda?
The library.
For the library, to have at the harbor.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think they anticipated having so much-
Yeah.
Money left over as they do now.
But it's still not answering my question, whose money is it?
Well, the town accepted it as donations, so technically, it's the town's money.
Yeah, I, I think this is great, and I appreciate the work they do, no question about it, but if, so if we wanted to, we could say, we'd like to take seventeen thousand dollars of this and put it into a tennis court. Theoretically, I understand that our citizens-
You could reallocate the funds, yes, they are town funds.
All right.
And I'll ask again, we should have a list perhaps on the twenty-ninth?
Can, is that possible?
Yeah.
If I can get into Trio.
Right, I'd like to see it, yeah.
Yep, just to see.
I mean, the, the downside of that is you, you, you know, you get volunteers that are working really hard to raise money-
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
With a purpose, and, you know, I, I think that their, um, their recommended, uh, options are, make a lot of sense to me.
I think these are wonderful, I have no problem with it, but I think-
The process is what you're asking about, and I think, but I think the process here was that these monies were raised and allocated to the control of the one hundred and twenty-fifth committee to do, to execute their, uh, thoughts, and they had a, they had a purpose in mind for the residual funds as well. Now, it's a year later, and we're out of the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, and the, the committee has said, you know what? That purpose for the residual funds is no longer something that the committee or the library is interested in.
Sure.
And so now the committee still has, in my opinion, the committee still has some say in what, what happens to those funds, and so now they're making this proposal, so I think that's the process.
Yeah.
That's where we are with it right now.
Working to the one fiftieth.
You know, they could, they could have said, oh, just turn it back to the general fund if they wanted to, and, and, or we could insist on that, I guess, as, as we have control over it, but I think they've made an excellent proposal here to do things that need to be done. The lime kilns in particular has been a bugaboo for a long time, and it's, it's-
I'm proud to be the second to the motion, I, I think these are great ideas.
Okay, so do we have any further discussion on the motion? Any questions for the Legacy Rockport or the one hundred and twenty-fifth folks? Have I misrepresented anything in my comments about the one hundred and twenty-fifth committee? If so, please yell at me. If not, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? No, four to nothing vote.
And thank you very much, much appreciated.
The next item is, uh, to consider approving the establishment of a GoFundMe page to support restoration of the Andre statue at Harbor Park, keeping in mind that we just, the previous item did allocate some money toward the Andre restoration as well.
I move to authorize Legacy Rockport to conduct a GoFundMe effort for the propose, for the purpose of raising funds to make the repairs to Andre statue.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
I'm just curious, so, uh, do we have to authorize GoFundMes?
That's, that was a question that was asked, and, and the answer is, we don't know, but we figured if we do, then we're safe.
Because we did a GoFundMe for Rockport, Texas.
Correct.
But other than briefly holding on to it.
So the select board has to vote to accept donations, and accept those donations. Legacy Rockport money goes through the town's financial statements. So therefore, because they're on the town's financial statements, the town has a responsibility, or the select board has a responsibility to accept those donations. And this is one of the things that creates one of those accounts on the trial balance, that isn't part of the budget. So when you look at things like this and say, well, it's not part of the budget, well, this is stuff that creates those things that's not part of the budget.
Put it on the list for the twenty-ninth.
It depends on whether we vote for it or not.
Any further discussion on the motion?
No, I'll, I'll-
I, I wanna put two cents worth in, unless Mark does, but just to, sort of, an update on the Andre, the seal, is that the Rockport Garden Club, uh, donated two thousand, five hundred dollars towards the total cost of roughly fourteen thousand dollars. Um, Rockport Legacy, or the, I'm sorry, the one twenty-fifth, uh, anniversary, uh, donated, uh, six thousand, so that brings us up to eight thousand, five hundred. So basically, the GoFundMe campaign is going to, uh, need to raise fifty-five hundred. So that's sort of what we're talking about.
And the last time was, was very successful, I think this is something that people, this would be an easy way for people to donate if they so choose.
I think this will be popular, yes.
Uh, we'll also set up an account that if they come into the town office, they can donate directly at the town office.
And go right to the same budget line?
Yes, it will go up to the same thing.
Great.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Four to nothing vote. Okay, uh, next item, consider-
Another confusing one.
We're here for it, do the heavy lifting. Consider using funds previously encumbered for a new backstop at the R E S fields for backstop repairs and field improvements. We have Rick's comments on the issue.
As you note, that, um, we had a, we had a meeting with Barrett Brown from the Recreation Committee, um, and, uh, Mike and I went down and visited and took a look at the field, and, uh, Barrett was saying that they, they really don't need that field to be a game field. Um, and we, Mike and I believe we can get the backstop so that it is playable, and it will look a lot better than it is, than it does now. But we don't need to bring the backstop up to, to game quality play. It will be used for a practice field, cause that's what they need the most of now, is a practice field. Um, and, um, so what we'll be doing is straightening up the poles, um, putting some of them in concrete, and putting the, the top rails back on and getting them so that they look a lot better from, from a distance. Uh, they, they perform the function just fine of what they need, and then takes, take that money and put it into repairs and maintenance of the infield to bring the infield up to playable status, because the infield is, was the big problem, is that the infield isn't at playable status, so.
What's all the equipment out there now?
There, he's already working on it, because they needed it.
Doing the infield.
Oh, wow.
Preparation.
Right, they, they, they need the practice space.
Well, and also, just to, to maybe reinforce that, though there is town equipment there, uh, I believe we had a surveyor there that was there for close to two full days, free of charge.
Uh, he was there for a good part of, one day, and came, volunteered his time, donated the time, laid the field all out, the bases where they go.
And also the bases and the sleeves that, cause we got sleeves for those bases, right? Where you can slide it into the-
The, the, I believe, what I've been told is Rotary has bought some new bases with sleeves. I've not seen them.
We are trying to, to work with folks to reduce as much cost as we can, so we had free surveying work, and we got, um, some of these bases free from the Rotary, and we very much appreciate it.
I move to authorize the expenditure of thirty-six hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents from the encumbered R E S backstop account to replace the infield material on the R E S ball field.
Second.
Um, and, and should that motion include also the repairs to the backstop?
I think I heard you say that.
Uh, yes, no, for the backstop.
And just so, when we were looking at it, there's only like two poles that actually need to be, that are any sort of percentage out of plum, that's-
Yeah, if I can get it in, and it budgets out, I may put one piece of new wire in the center, so there's not a, if, if the budget will take it.
Well, I think this, this makes the field usable, uh, so it makes, makes all the sense in the world to me.
There's, there's one spot in the backstop that Mike and I were looking at this morning that, where the fences kind of bent out, out a little bit, so that'll, that'll have to get repaired, because it's unsafe the way it is.
Uh, any further discussion on this motion?
No, I'd hate to have to move the equipment out of there, so. Let's go ahead and approve it.
All, all in favor? Any opposed? No, four to nothing. Um, I am gonna suggest that we take five minutes, so that I can use the restroom.
Second.
So, let's take a five-minute break.
So, are we gonna vote on that, I heard the second?
We just did.
We voted.
No, I mean for taking a break, cause it could be.
Chairman's prerogative.
Darn.
And I got a helicopter, though it's not one that can-
Okay, we're back in session. Uh, the update on comprehensive plan review, we're going to skip. Uh, next item is consider approval of a contract for emergency medical services from Northeast Mobile Health Services.
See, on my re, my backup, this has been, uh, approved by both Camden Now and Hope, which Hope was, we were wondering if they were going to go, it, it, there was some reluctance on the part of Hope. Um, but it's, uh, it's, uh, a change in the way we're doing it. It's a performance based contract, which, uh, which is what the committee was looking for. And it's a one-year contract with an option for a two-year renewal. Um, this has been reviewed. Uh, Ken and, Ken and Mark have been on that committee?
Ken more than Mark.
Ken, yeah, has been working on it. It's been, it has been a number of meetings about this. Uh, the, uh, agreement with the edits, you, you can follow along with the, all the edits that have been made, and then the final agreement is in the, uh, package that is unmarked up.
And I had, I emailed you, Rick, about this. Maybe you had a chance to look at it or not, but I, I, in general, the contract is as we expected. Um, I did have a question, though, on, because basically what we execute is each town makes a separate contract, the way I understand it, with Northeast Mobile Health. Uh, and we decided on that the two performance metrics that we're going to measure are response time and, uh, response level. And basically, response level says that they have to respond at least ninety-seven percent of the time with the appropriate level of service. In other words, if it's a paramedic problem, a paramedic shows up, or, or advanced ALS, whatever it is. Uh, and we agreed in the committee last time, I think, that we would measure those response levels across all four towns.
Yeah.
But the response times, because the response time metric is different for every town, we would measure town by town. Now, my concern, and actually, it's probably a concern for Northeast Health, is that the penalties, this is on page four of sixteen of the clean version, penalties for insufficient response level says they'll pay the following penalties to the town for failure to meet the response level performance. I would read this as that every town is going to get that if they don't meet the response levels, and I'm not sure that that's what we meant.
I think it meant the town where the response level happened.
No, but the response levels we're measuring off all four towns. That's my point. The response times, we're measuring town by town, but the response level is across all four towns. And if we're measuring that across all four towns and they-
Well, they-
-fall short, then they're, then it seems to me, the way the contract is written, each town is going to, Northeast Health is going to pay five thousand to each town for a total of twenty thousand dollars, and I don't think that's what they-
No, that's not what they-
That's not what, what was talked about, I don't think.
So you're saying, sign it quick?
But for the response time, that is likely payable to the, to each town.
Town affected, yeah.
That, that makes sense, but the response levels, I thought we were going to do across the whole system, so that's something that I would, I think that may need to be looked at, because I don't think Northeast Health-
Nobody's brought that up in the-
I sent you an email-
Yeah, the two previous.
When you were in Santa Fe and, um, but otherwise, I think it, it's fine. I think that, uh-
We may have to come back with an amendment.
Uh, but basically, what the committee did, did is said, okay, let's let the professionals, such as Northeast Health, decide. We'll tell them what we want, and then they'll decide how to deploy their resources to accomplish that, as opposed to us telling them, here's how we, here's the resources we want you to have.
And I, I did give it a, a cursory look, but could you refresh me on, so that we don't end up in the same predicament with complaints about service? This will be done quarterly by whom? Or every month, or?
There's a requirement in here for quarterly meetings-
Yeah.
-of a commi, of a committee. The, one of the challenges is getting data out of Knox County, that we can make comparable data, data that's comparable out of Knox County that we can check with-
Yeah.
-Northeast. And that's a little bit of a challenge, uh, so that we're not doing a bunch of work, because, you know, analyzing the data could be a, a bit of a chore.
Actually, that was, and I only want to enter, because that was kind of my one question, too. I really appreciate all the work you all put in there. This seems like a, a smart route for us to go. Um, you know, I like the one year with the, the two-year extension, but I, you know, it's like the trust but verify, but I guess I still haven't gotten the best handle on the verify aspect, especially as it relates to county.
I'm sorry.
And how we get the data from county.
I was, I was led to believe, in talking with, uh, one of the participants, I won't throw Chris under the bus, but he didn't seem to think it would be too difficult to be able to get the material from Linwood, the director.
I, I think in particular, when, when, when the towns say we need the mon, we need the information from Linwood.
Yeah, we pay for it.
Yeah.
It will be different than if they-
They have to give it to us. I think they, they had a little issue with, with the private company coming in and saying, we want the data, and we want it in this form, and, and I guess, understand that to some extent, but if the towns ask for it, we pay our county taxes, um, and they, they need to give it to us.
I guess my last final question is, um, oh, no, I think I read it. It, all the other, there are two other towns have already approved this?
Right, two, uh, Hope and Camden have already approved it.
Okay.
So-
Are you going to notify them of, of Ken's concern?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm assuming it, we may need to come back, if that's, if that's not the case, we may need to come back with an amendment.
It's just a wording change, and I, and I think the, the intent from the discussions, I think, was that it was town, you know, for the-
Per town.
-wide. And the other thing is that this, um, one of the issues that came up during the deliberations was, uh, the idea that they were sending a lot of ambulances down to Knox County Airport to, to respond to calls from the islands who fly somebody over on, on the airplane, and then they got to be transported to the hospital. Um, and the committee had some concern that that was taking resources away from us. Well, this allows them, if they have the resources to do that, that they still have to meet our metrics.
Right.
Um, and, and actually, it ends up helping them, because they earn more revenue, and in the long run, maybe the subsidies come down. And there's still the possibility, they're still talking to the island towns that, of maybe, uh, and there is a provision in the contract, too, to, to pull in some other towns in the agreement, uh, should that become a possibility. And, and, you know, Vinyl Haven, I think Vinyl Haven was the only island that used it, but they-
Right.
They could potentially become part of this agreement as well. Um, and perhaps some of the other-
I think Isles, Islesboro, I think, did.
Oh, there was, yeah, you're right. There was a few calls to Islesboro, but nowhere near as many as-
No, no, yeah.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-something calls.
Seventy-nine, I think. Yeah, because North Haven had more calls than Hope did.
Yeah.
So, um, so there was, we did reach out to them, or, or Rick did, and, and I think Butch did, too.
They came, they came, he came over and met with the four town managers.
So do we, do we want to approve the motion as it's written, or wait until we have an, a-
I think I would approve the motion as, my suggestion would be approve the motion as it's written, and then if we have to make a contract amendment to deal with that one issue, we can deal with it. That way, we'll signal to the towns, because I think we know what the intent was. It's just a wording issue, and-
On that note, here we go. I move to approve the Northeast Ambulance Contract for the term of one year to begin July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, at a subsidy rate of eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars, and to authorize the town manager to sign.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to publicly thank Ken for Yeoman's work on this committee. I was originally supposed to, uh, be doing that, but I got tied up with some other things, and, and you took over, and this is a very important thing for the town, and again, I appreciate the work you did. And Rick, you were just doing your job.
I get paid. I get paid for it, so.
My, my question would be, should we include in that motion with the option, the two-year option?
Um, well, it's a one-year contract. The option's, the option's written into the contract.
Written into the contract.
I think, I think the motion is fine.
Perfect.
Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Uh, now, the next four items all are sort of moving shells of money around. Um, this has to do with, uh, Rick described it pretty well in his comments, basically, but the library committee had, had given the town eighty thousand dollars for help with the new library design and building and, and things of that nature, and, and we just have to take these actions to formally accept the money, create a reserve account, um, and then authorize some expenditures from that account. So that's what that means. And by the way, just as, as an aside, um, we had some emails from the, the fundraising group, um, about their setting things up and five oh one C three and all that sort of thing, and I think that this reserve account that we're creating will be the place where the private fundraising will end up going as well, unless I hear something differently, so.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We got, we got, we got a mover.
Once they accept their donations, in order to keep donors private, if they wish to remain anonymous, they have to be outside of the town's FOIA requests.
Right.
So this committee will accept the donations. They will then turn the money over to the library committee, in which the library committee will turn the funds over to us.
Okay. Um, I just figured that it's, it's going to be called the Rockport Library Foundation, I guess. They're going to, they're going to be providing donations, so they'll turn it over to the library committee, to the endowment fund?
Right.
Okay. Uh, whatever. I thought they could turn it over to the town, too, but it's a donation from the foundation.
They could, but then it kind of connects them to a FOIA. We're, we're trying to keep donors who want to remain anonymous anonymous.
Okay, well, you know best. Okay.
I move to authorize the expenditure of forty-one thousand one hundred and ten dollars and forty-nine cents from the Design and Construction Reserve Fund for Architectural and Engineering Services, and to authorize the expenditure of an additional twenty thousand dollars for the design and engineering as needed.
So I, I want to second that, but don't we have to accept the money?
Yeah, hang on.
Yes, you do.
That was written, that was written before the other, it was broken up the way it got broken up.
I'm with you. It was a good, it was a good exercise.
Just moving along.
Right.
So you have to accept the donated funds. You have to vote to create the reserve.
And these motions, these motions got all mixed up.
Yeah, they did.
Okay.
And then you can vote to expend the money out of it.
So I'm-
I move-
Go ahead.
No, I, I move to accept eighty thousand dollars given to us by the library committee and their endowment.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the funds from the library committee. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I move to create a Design and Construction Reserve Fund with, here's the only, the, uh, pausing real quickly. Before we design this fund, uh, should we not have some language around? I know we have some good template language from some of the other reserve accounts we've done, but do, if, am I to anticipate that the template language we have around our existing reserve funds will more than likely be the same language you used for this?
Yes, it will follow this, and then you'll have an updated reserve.
Just because we typically don't approve something we haven't really looked at, but I move to create a reserve account titled the Design and Construction Reserve Fund for the purpose of design and construction of the new library.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a four to nothing vote.
Now, I think it's Mark's.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
You all have to vote to put the money in, the donated money you just accepted into the reserve account.
I move to, uh, take the donated money of eighty thousand dollars that we just received from the library committee and place it into the newly constructed Design and Construction Reserve Fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
How it should.
Let's try it again. Authorize the expenditure of forty-one thousand one hundred and ten dollars and forty-nine cents from the Design and Construction Reserve Fund for Architectural and Engineering Services, and to authorize the expenditure of an additional twenty thousand dollars for design and engineering as needed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
The forty-one thousand and change is existing monies that we owe to people, like the Steve Smith and Company and-
We've already paid it, correct?
We've paid it. We overextended the budget line until you do this.
So this will make the budget whole.
But that's where we got the forty-one thousand one hundred and ten. Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Oh, wait, real briefly, uh, can we also just, uh, I know we don't typically write letters to our own committees when they give us money, but I think this is awesome, so can we send a letter of thanks to the library committee?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's-
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item. Move to appoint, uh, write it here, Bill Naypower as Assistant Code Enforcement Officer.
I move to appoint William Naypower as Assistant Code Enforcement Officer and Assistant Local Plumbing Inspector, and also to give, I believe, David Studer, or a previous one, a letter of thanks for their work.
Well, I think this is actually replacing Jamie.
Oh, well, then strike that him, him-
Just, just to appoint him.
So I can- But we'll give Jamie a nice letter.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion here? And again, this is just so that Bill can fill in, as Jamie would have done, um, when Scott is unavailable. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No, okay. Um, and the next item is, this is one that I put on, um, just because I heard from the chair of the Islesboro Select Board late last week, um, to consider sending a letter of support to the town of Islesboro regarding the recent increases in the ferry rates. I put, uh, something in the, uh, packet, and I've had a few more letters since then, but, uh, basically what's happened, as I understand it, and you may have seen stories in the newspaper about it, the fact that the main DOT imposed this increase, which I believe was more than double the rates. It was fairly significant, and they did it without any public feedback or anything like that.
Well, so I've, I've spent over the last couple of weeks, many, many, do you want me, I don't want to-
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so I will give credit where credit is due. M D O T and the ferry service did do a good job of public outreach. They went to every island, uh, Swan Island, Frenchborough, Vinyl Haven, North Haven, Islesboro, and Matineus, I believe, um, twice. Um, they, they really did hear from the community. There's a couple of things. Uh, one, as it relates to those public hearings, we were given a couple of different options that, that they were showcasing as ones that they were considering, and so we discussed those ad nauseam. Um, in my opinion, having attended both of the meetings out to Islesboro, though a flat rate, uh, was very briefly discussed, it was part of another topic, and never did they bring up that the flat rate amount may potentially be as high as their final proposal. So, they came out, they talked to us, they, they, they did hear from the community, they- So they came out, they talked to us, they, they, they did hear from the community, they engaged with the community, but their final product was not one that we discussed.
Right.
Um, and then the other thing is, the rubric's not here, but it's pretty easy to describe. We've got this sheet right here with columns and rows, and across the, the top you would have the islands, and then down the side you have the, the various commodities. One vehicle, one person, round trip, a bicycle, space, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And there are some islands that if you were to color, oh, we saw a rate decrease. You were to color that square for that island and that commodity green. Uh, Swan Island, Frenchboro, Vinyl Haven, North Haven, all had a very healthy spackling of green in there with rate decreases. Some of those percentages associated with those rate decreases being quite high, especially if you got to the Matinicus, um, column, that said there was this striking red strip down the center, which was Islesborough, where every aspect of their utilization of the main state ferry service went up with the largest percentage being the one-vehicle, one-person round trip going from thirteen seventy-five up to thirty, which is a hundred and eighteen percent increase. That's the largest of, of their increases, but, um, I could, I could talk about this for a long, long time.
But at any rate, the, uh, the Chair of the, of the Islesborough Select Board called me, and he said, he explained much of what you have talked about, the fact that when they, when, uh, after they'd had the meetings and they got the news of the rate increase, and it was something totally different than, than they were expecting from the meetings, and it was a little bit of a blind side and a very short time until it's going into effect. He told me that without them asking for it at all, they had, they had, of course, written to DOT and complained about it. And, uh, the Waldorf County Commissioners wrote a letter in support of them, which they didn't ask for. And he said they were very pleased about that, and, and then they started thinking, well, maybe we should enlist some of the other communities, which is why he called me. Can, Lincolnville is considering it, Camden is considering it.
Belfast did it.
The city Belfast, as well as the county commissioners did it and some other ones, so he thought. Uh, and, and Islesborough has retained special counsel, and they have a court hearing on this next week, which is why we had to do it tonight and not wait until a later time. Uh, the special counsel they engaged, by the way, is Bernstein Schur, so they're going to be in good shape there. And I got a copy of the letter that Bernstein Schur has written and asking for the stay. Um, so basically, um, what I'm suggesting, and I actually drafted a letter, I only have one copy of it. You can, you know, if you want to look at it or whatever, but I suggested.
You're the, you're the negative Nancy, aren't you?
Right, listen, I use ferries to get back and forth islands, and I don't have a lot of sympathy, because I, I think that probably the cost of running the ferry back and forth is not being completely taken care of by the fares that they had previously been charging.
Incorrect. As it relates to the operational costs for Islesborough, Islesborough is the only island that generates more revenue than they're required to under state statute. State statute says no more than fifty percent of the cost of running the ferry will be subsidized through the highway fund. Again, no more than fifty percent.
And that breakdown is what?
They're at sixty-six percent, whereas no other island clears the fifty percent. And the other thing that's really been boggling my brain is that they say that the, um, different prices for different islands is an antiquated way of doing things. However, that would be like JetBlue saying that, hey, I'll fly you from Portland to Boston, five hundred bucks, but I'll also fly you from Portland to Djibouti, Africa, for five hundred bucks, or Portland to Hawaii for five hundred bucks.
I don't think they fly there.
So, but the, the point being, when the Ferry Service displayed a, a statistical data point, which is Islesborough is forty percent of the ridership of the Ferry Service for these islands, so they should be forty percent of the revenue. However, I don't believe that it passes the straight face test to think that putting ten folks on a boat and transporting them from Lincolnville to Islesborough has the same operational costs as it does to transport ten people from Rockland to Matinicus and/or Rockland to any of the other Fox Island, well, other than Islesborough. So the whole, it should be flat rate, doesn't necessarily make sense to me. It's like taking the Greyhound and all of a sudden they'll charge you the exact same amount to take you from the bus stop here to Portland as they would to take you from the bus stop here down to Florida. It just doesn't, it, it takes more resources to transport people further, which is why you charge them more. Um, so I'm, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, uh, the state is in a rosy place as far as the budget is concerned. There's a seven hundred thousand structural budgetary gap between the highway fund money and the revenues coming in. However, with the proposed changes, Islesborough will, and I believe I have these numbers correct, Islesborough itself will generate an additional, this is above and beyond their current revenue that they generate. Islesborough will generate an additional eight hundred-plus thousand dollars by themselves, which is more than the budgetary gap we're facing. So when I look at some of the other islands and I see double and triple-digit reductions in their fees, and then I look at Islesborough and across the board, you're getting double, if not triple-digit increases, it's just, it's very difficult from a, from the perspective of an island that the Ferry Service is their highway. I know you can relate to that, Mark. Um, but they've done really good things at attracting and retaining young families. They've done great things with childcare, et cetera, et cetera, all things I could, you know, wax strong about. And this thing that we never fully discussed, or even partially discussed, in my opinion, as a person that attended the meetings, and is the representative for this island, this was never floated as a potential. And so to have this shock hit this island is, is really going to be difficult.
And the other thing that, that the Chair of the Select Board told me is they're, they're not looking for no increase. They, they understand that the prices.
They totally know.
They understand the prices have to go up, but the hundred and some odd percent increase is a little hard to swallow for them. And they just, they just want it to be revisited, um, with the idea that the proposal that's currently, uh, they really didn't get a chance to, to, um, weigh in on that particular proposal until it was, you know, shown to them. And they, they would like to have a chance to do that, so. And all they're asking for is a letter of support for doing.
Is there any likelihood, if there is a, a court case, that, uh, anything more than our letter would be sufficient? Or would somebody have to represent Rockport?
No, they're just, they're just looking for support from surrounding communities, uh, because they're going to have dozens of them from the sounds of it.
I will likely be there, but in a different capacity than on the Select Board. And as a just random aside, just because I spent about four hours working on this today, MDOT has still not yet, to this day, submitted their rules for this ferry rate that's called a tariff. They haven't submitted this either to the Secretary of State's office or to the Legislature's Executive Director for dispersment to the Legislature. So the Committee of Jurisdiction, the Transportation Committee, has still yet to be informed about something that's going to be taking effect in less than a week. So, uh, I, I move to, uh, send that letter that Ken has, uh, so nicely drafted up for us in support of the town of Islesborough, um, and their recent increases in ferry rates.
I'll second it. Motion and a second, and as I say, I, I drafted this very quickly this afternoon using some of the other letters that had been sent along. I tried to make it particular to Rockport, uh, because, you know, we have the hospital here and Islesborough residents come over and use our hospital. Uh, there are Isles, or, Rockport tradespeople who go serve customers on Islesborough, and they're going to have to pay that increase, and that'll just be passed on costs to them, could have a negative economic impact here.
There's only one segment to where Rockport folks that consistently go out to the island won't necessarily be affected, and that's in the magnet program, where we get mainland kids that go out to school there and island kids that come to the mainland. Um, state statute protects that, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't include that in the letter, so. Uh, and anyway, I don't know whether everybody had a chance to read the letter, has any suggestions about doing it any differently. I'm happy to, uh, expose it, but we've got to get this printed and signed in the next day or so, because they're going to court, I think on the twenty-first, which is a week from today.
Twenty-first is when it's supposed to go into effect, and that's when they need to at least issue it.
Right. Uh, they're, they're looking for a stay right now. That's what they're asking, is just for a stay. Um, so if everybody thinks the letter's okay, then what I'll do is, is get it to Diane, have her put it on Town Stationery, and then we'll get it off to them within the next day or two.
Did you hang around for this conversation specifically, or are you hanging around just because you're awesome? Awesome. Cool. I was just going to give you an opportunity if you, if you were sticking around just for this.
Any, uh, further discussion?
In order to hear that nod, we'll have to have you come to the mic.
Any, any further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a four to nothing vote, and I'll get this to Diane in the morning.
Thank you.
And then, uh, it will, each one of us will have to stop in in fairly short order over the next couple of days to sign it.
Diane is out, but if you get it to me, uh.
Oh, you're going to type it?
I can do it.
Okay.
Just give it to me and I'll.
Well, it's already typed, right?
It's, I'll send it to you, and so you don't have to retype it, but you'll just have to put it on. Well, it's not, it's not on Town Stationery, whatever, so I just want to, it's, it'll work out better that way. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is actually just to sign the warrants. We've already voted, we don't.
So is, so as we're aware, I, I will not be around as of six o'clock tomorrow morning, probably until Monday morning.
Oh, okay.
So that'll be one less you'll have on there.
Well, we can sign it with the three of us. We can, I'll put.
Would you give me a piece of paper with your signature on it? Make it nice and legible, and then I'll just not.
Linda's coming in five thirty tomorrow, right? Henry. We'll figure something out. You know what I'll do is I'll, uh, in the letter, one of the other letters said unanimous vote, and I didn't want to put that in here to presuppose, but I will change that to unanimous vote so that everybody knows. Your name will be in the header of the letter.
Right.
And it'll, it'll say it was a unanimous vote, so they'll know that you voted, uh, in favor of it, so I think that'll be fine. Um, the next item is, is simply to sign these warrants. We've already voted on them, but as Linda told us a couple of years ago, we have to sign them while we are in session. These are the town warrants, um, so, um, I can start those going around along with all the other stuff we have to sign, and, uh, we can do liaison reports at the same time, I believe. I'll send those down. That way I got to work on the cards, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, maybe while you all are, I'll try to bang out my liaison reports. Um, so from the Recreation Committee, which I have gone to their last two meetings, and I feel good about that. Thank you all for bearing with me. There was, um, a porta potty issue. Uh, it was more just a who's doing what thing, and I think, uh, I've already talked with Rick about it. It, everything's working out okay for this year. We're good. Uh, but like with a lot of things with our relationships between organizations and the town, we just need to clarify who's going to be making the call for the porta potties, um, in a timely manner. That's about it.
And I don't know why it was ever anything other than the town.
Well, and I don't, it's one of those things that I think that if someone says, someone with resources says, you know what? I'll cover that one for you.
Right.
All of a sudden, we're like, woo-hoo, someone's doing it, and then it's five years later, and that person, maybe it slips their mind, and all of a sudden, why isn't the town doing this? So just trying to, you know.
Yeah, it's a town facility.
Yeah. Um, another thing is, uh, we did have some discussions around potentially relaxing our policy, because it's not an ordinance, but our policy on pesticide or, uh, what Mr. Novak calls IPM, which is Integrated Pest Management. Uh, there is a desire from the folks associated with recreation that we be allowed to use some mild pesticides or pest management tools for our sports fields specifically. If the town wanted to expand that to town-wide, then that's a bigger, broader discussion, because the town office falls into the same things, you know, everything that the town owned falls under that policy. So we could have that bigger, broader discussion, uh, but Rick, uh, would very much like to get some resolution around that, because everything that we've heard is that it's just, it works better if you use the pesticides. You don't have to apply it as much, and you get better results. And I don't think we have water table issues that we need to worry about it somehow percolating into any of the public supply or, or things like that. Um, so that was that. From pathways, though I took some notes, I did not bring them like I did these. But the one thing I do remember is going back, let's travel back into time, Rick and Ken, because you other gentlemen weren't necessarily on here. When, when we coupled with Camden to do their recreation map, their mapping that they did of all the cool things between Camden and Rockport, we had collaborated with them to get Rockport items onto the map, and that was a great collaboration. And the end product, the maps are great. We, uh, never actually paid them for any of the stuff that we said we were going to pay them for. And the reason that I don't necessarily want to sour this is, one, the maps are great. They look good. They have our stuff on it, and they did not order enough to last for eight years. They only ordered enough to last for a couple of years. And so before they go and do the printing for the next order, they can do some mild tweaking to it, because they already did so much work setting the base, um, product. And when they do that mild tweaking, if there's still a good, solid partner in the town of Rockport, they will be, that more Rockport stuff will show up on it. It may be instead of the Camden recreational area map, it's the Camden Rockport. It has the Rockport seal on there, maybe a little more Rockport stuff, maybe a double-sided, so.
What, what are we talking about for dollars?
It was, if I remember correctly, it was like.
It seemed like it was a lot.
No, it was, it was two hundred dollars plus or minus a thousand, so it was either like eight hundred or twelve hundred. It was somewhere around there. I can't remember exactly. It was a while back. I had talked with Bill about it. It seemed like we had budgeted money. It got back to you, and then just multiple people dropped the ball, and we just never gave Camden this eight hundred bucks or something for us to get our stuff.
Yeah, and it was, it, the, what, what ended up happening was they said, look, we're printing it up anyway.
So just give us some money at some point.
But what they wanted us to do was participate in the next round.
Okay, well, then there we are.
But the maps could still be used at our Harbor Masters office.
And I think they are being used there now.
And so it's just if, if you could maybe touch base with Audra, figure out what I've missed, and then maybe the next time, at our next meeting or a following meeting, at some point, we just need to try to give them some money. And then the last thing, though, some really good things were discussed at the Opera House, and I'm sure Terry could maybe fill me in on the things that I've forgotten. But the one thing that stood out to me in the little job I gave myself was they do want to buy a new lift that could change out the lights and do rigging and things upstairs in the Opera House. A lift is necessary for this. Um, the lift options that they were exploring, uh, some of the things that I thought were good highlights. One is that, though we haven't seen it and, and verified this by touching it, what we are told is that the lift itself can be loaded and unloaded into a standard truck bed, so not a one-ton or a big, you know, big flat bed, so a standard truck bed by one person, which is different than the, the lift we have right now, which I heard anecdotally, we actually had a slight incident loading it where it, it hurt a town employee. So what I did with that information was went and tried to talk to all the department heads that had buildings that have high ceilings, so I stopped by the town office. Um, I talked to Public Works, I talked to the harbor, no, I did not talk to the harbor. I talked to the library, and I talked to fire. And the only person that, that did not say, oh, yeah, that would be awesome as a shared collective resource for the town that would be stored here, um, was the fire station, and that's because just the.
They got a few ladders there.
They got, they got some ladders. They said it's not a huge deal. We do it with some ladders. Um, but even Mike was like, yeah, there's some stuff, we do it with ladders. But it's a little kind of puckery when we do it with ladders. So all that is to say that when it comes before this board, or as, as far as do we want to invest in this, um, I believe that this bit of resource had, could be utilized by a lot of different areas in our town and not just the Opera House itself. And if it wasn't such a mobile bit of equipment, maybe it would be too much of a pain. But everything we've heard about the device, it's easy to transport. And if we got lights to do in the town office, we can bring it, wheel it into the town office, change everything out super quick, bring it over to different places.
Well, when they went to paint, they had to erect staging, when they had to do any work in there, they had to put staging up. It was a pain.
How much does it cost?
What was the cost? Eight?
Uh, for a used one, yeah.
And then the new one was?
Around, uh, twelve.
Around uh twelve thousand, I would say.
And the new one came with more warranties and stuff.
Can we use that out of the Recreation Field to put the basketball nets up?
I mean, we could. We could, though. That's the thing. That's the beauty of it.
We've got the money in the reserve to do that.
Actually, that was the one thing that um I do not believe that this device is quite rated for outdoor work only as it relates to weather. So like a wind event or something like that. So if you were gonna do outdoor work with it, you would have to be very cognizant and aware of, of the weather.
I've got a question.
So, but that's my update unless, was there other really important Opera House things that you wanted me to bring up?
You weren't there for it.
I, yeah.
Well, there's our proposal to rent out this black screen equipment here to renters.
I'm all about it. Sounds awesome.
I'm uh.
Those are the main points, um.
I mean, we're still trying to resolve some of the balcony issues, but that seems to be on a pretty good path. I'm still miffed that we have to remove seats. Um.
It's the Fire Marshal.
But the Fire Marshal's the Fire Marshal.
Yeah.
Um.
We've heard two different sides. One is uh it's okay, you're in a building. The other side is, yeah, you have to do it.
Let's talk to the you're okay guy.
Yeah, send every one of these.
Oh, perfect. So listen, I got a question before we go too much further. Luckily, my people have started filling out their forms and turning them in, and they've been in, you know, packets. But my question is with regards to the temporary liquor license. Why did we consider it a temporary one? Why didn't we just issue them the regular one? And then when they wanted to come to us for a different one, they could have done that.
Cause we would've had to have a public hearing.
Well, we can't put a temporary date on that, is what I just found out, because there was no date on this. So we can't actually set.
But Linda wants to say something.
What you're temporarily approving is so that he can use the liquor license he currently has just to serve beer pending having the public hearing and a hearing June twenty fifth or whatever date your meeting is. So it's like in one month, you'll be having that meeting or a little over a month so that you can hear public hearing for the.
So being the devil's advocate, what happens if they don't come in in a month's time?
They will.
What happens if they don't?
Well, the motion, Mark, had the expiration date in it. That's.
This does not have one that we're signing.
No.
And that's what I'm saying is, the motion's one thing. The official document we're signing doesn't have anything. So I guess that's what I'm asking is.
If you five times through there. Um, I'm happy to put a date on there. And actually, this is a, this is not the license, Mark. This is just a memo saying that we have no objection to a temporary liquor license being issued. The license was issued by the motion, is it, I think. So the document we're signing is not the license.
So regardless of what happens, he's only good until June thirtieth.
July first is what we said.
July first, yeah.
If he doesn't come back to you, then he can only serve beer. He can't serve the other beverages.
Is this other license expiring?
May twenty fifth.
Yeah. So this gives him an extension to get to.
If he doesn't come to us by July first, he can't serve anything. He won't have a license period.
He won't have a license period. So he's gonna be back.
Uh, liaison reports. Um, mine are pretty brief because there hasn't been much going on. ORC has not been meeting there through their season. Uh, Cemetery Committee has not met, but we gotta do it soon. We gotta get down to the cemetery down there. Um, ZBA has not met. Legacy Rockport is meeting, and you heard a lot about what they're doing tonight um as far as the GoFundMe page for Andre and, and taking on the line kilns. Um, ambulance review, you saw the results of that and the contract tonight, and that'll be ongoing, and uh that's all I have. Um.
You wanna drive those back down here? Apparently I've got many more pages to.
Yeah.
Please.
And just so we're clear, the only one that has a date is the first one.
Well, I put that on there.
Oh, you did, okay.
Just to not knowing that there's five other ones behind it. Thank you.
Uh, very briefly, first of all, I'll just make a quick note. You may have noticed sort of between my urging and I think Mark's also. Um, we're trying to get the different committees in town to make some notes and include them in our packet. Uh, I think it, it just helps fill out the liaison reports and gives us a little more detail. And I think you'll find it interesting to look these over uh prior to the meeting.
And I will jump in there just for a second because I sort of took on the idea of doing that committee handbook, and I just haven't got to it this year, but it'll be early next year. And I, and that, that's part and parcel of that, and I, and I had hoped, I have one volunteer in the town who's gonna help me do it. And I think maybe after the new year, we'll get that done.
Okay. Anyway, uh, so I'm going to sort of skip over the Harbor Committee. Well, we're gonna skip over, keep Rockport beautiful. Quick question for Jeff, though. There was an issue with a committee member who just simply wasn't coming to the meetings. Um, and then it sort of became a question of what to do about that. And I think Sam was gonna talk to them, but has, have we had a resolution to that thing?
That should be in the bylaws about non-attendance to meetings.
Same person?
Yeah, we've, we've had that issue come up on other committees.
The same person, Jeff, that's?
Same person, yeah.
That's been missing meetings a lot for a long time?
So what does, what do the bylaws say? Whose responsibility is that? The Chairman of the Department or the Select Board to say thank you?
At some point, I mean, basically, the, the Chair can, the Chair of the Committee can ask for the member to, if they're not gonna come, to resign. And then at some point, they can come to the Select Board, and the Select Board, I think, we could say, you know, we could, we could declare the position vacant.
Yeah, cause they serve at our pleasure.
Right.
But it's up to the, it's up to the Chairman.
At least to make the initial contact, yeah.
Okay. One thing, I don't know if this is helpful or not, but when I was working on standing up the Recreation Committee, what I did was I went to all of the members who hadn't been attending for like two years. And it wasn't like individual members. No one had met. And what I asked them was, are you still interested in doing this? Because if you're interested and you're gonna show up, we'd love to have you. But if you're not, that's totally cool. If you resign, that allows me to go out and recruit someone who does want to do this. And so the individuals themselves decided to resign to open up other spots. Just throwing it out there.
So when it comes time to fill the positions, um, it always seems to come back to us to find people for that spot. So I mean.
Right.
Why have we encouraged the committees before to go out and find people?
Uh, I mean, we always do. I think ultimately it's the Select Board's responsibility to, to populate the committees. But certainly, the people who work on the committees have a good idea of what the committees do and often are gonna come in with recommendations for, gee, I think so and so, or encourage them to, to submit an application for committee service, so.
I mean, I think that would be, cause right now, I think we've only got, what, four, where there's just one person missing on.
You know, we're, we're doing pretty well.
So that's what I mean. If, if, that would be a, a great thing to go into July first with, with.
Yeah, I don't know where the, where the renewals stand on those. I don't know whether Diane sent those out yet or not. Um, but uh.
But i- in that case, in the Harbor Committee, I think we've been up against this before, and the person will come back, say, yes, I don't wanna get off. I'm, I wanna stay on, and we'll come back and attend a few meetings, and then it starts happening again.
That's a situation too, where, I mean, we have to reappoint these people to committees. And, and, you know, we get the roster in July or August or whenever Diane gets all the, the renewals processed. And then, you know, if, if there is a, a member who hasn't been attending, the Select Board can choose not to reappoint. Um, we have that problem. It's never happened since I've been on the board because, I mean, usually people know. If they're not coming to the meetings, and, and.
Does that happen one time a year, though? We reappoint everybody, or does it roll?
When they're.
Well, it's the, the expiration. No, it's, it's one time a year because all the terms expire at the end of June.
Yeah, okay.
So in July or maybe sometimes August if we don't get the paperwork done in time.
In this case, uh, you know, this person was reapproved even though there'd been an issue. So we may be stuck with that person for another couple of years unless the Chairman makes a recommendation.
Over a calendar year, because it's like a three-year position or something, or maybe just six months or whatever. Pick a specific timeframe. If you have not attended more than fifty percent of the meetings.
Well, that's in the, that's in the bylaws, yeah.
So we're just not enforcing it?
Well, the by, the bylaws have an attendance, for most committees have an attendance clause in them saying that, you know, that, that they could be assisted. I don't remember the verbiage of it or whatever, but, uh, but there is a provision in the bylaws for non-attendance. Do you have any, are there any alternate members on the Harbor Committee?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I can't remember who.
An alternate member can come and vote, and, and you can have a full roster there if you've got the alternate member. It's just, it's cleaner if the other person would, would resign. And the only thing you can do is ask them.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Let's leave it to the Chair of the Harbor Committee to complete their.
And it's important because I have seen issues where people have shown up to ask uh action of the Harbor Committee, and there hasn't been a quorum.
Right.
And that's, you know, when that happens to citizens, that's not.
And that was one of the questions that we asked when uh the attorneys were in for the committee presentation uh last fall. Is in that situation, can the committee, even without a quorum, can they go ahead and discuss issues? And the answer, the attorney said, well, it's probably not a good idea because if issues are discussed and members of the public, you know, say they get, oh, there's not a quorum, there's not gonna be a meeting, they leave, and then issues are discussed or whatever, and even if there's no votes taken, sometimes consensuses are drawn and stuff like that. So as I said, it was better not to do that.
Okay. Uh, Comprehensive Review Plan Committee, I would draw your particular attention to uh the note that Bill Chapman sent out because there are gonna be some discussion uh and some decisions we're gonna have to make. Uh, so just take a look at that before our next meeting. Finally, the Investment Committee, and I say finally, is apparently gonna be meeting on the twenty fourth. It'll be my first meeting, uh, almost one year after.
Have you found another person?
On what? The Investment Committee? No, I've been delinquent in.
No, I mean, I.
In harassing Megan about it, uh, so.
Well, she's tried, but it, they.
It's hard to find.
It, and it's hard to get a quorum. Uh, you know, they're, the people that are on there, many of them travel a bit. And so getting all of them in the same room at the same time becomes difficult.
We've had some really good people on that committee. Uh, and it's been a very valuable committee. But it's, that's the, the double-edged sword of that, I guess, is if you get people who are in that business and, and very successful at it. Like you say, they may have other scheduling companies. It would make them hard to meet.
Yeah, just double checking. We've, we've only had three. The capital improvement, uh, the pathways, and the investment. We're the only three listed.
That had vacancies?
Yep.
Wow.
And actually, the way the market's been doing over the past year until recently, it probably doesn't matter.
Anyway, more to follow. Um, your liaison report, Mark?
The ones that have been had, they've been in the report.
Okay.
And um I sent out an email to uh the parks for Thursday, cause I will be out of town. Um, and you took care of the ambulance. The capital improvement isn't gonna meet, but I would suggest that we try to set something up with them.
Probably this summer.
Yeah, maybe in late August, September sometime.
Even earlier than that, maybe just to get their feet under them and see where things are. You'll have to talk to, you'll have to talk to Megan and see what she'd like to do with that.
Um, I, uh, we had agreed as a board to have a meeting sometime in August with the non-resident taxpayers. And I started, I've asked Diane to start to put together an email list so we can reach out to those people and advise them. So we may wanna be thinking about a date for that.
Okay.
Many of them will be around in August, I.
I mean, typically.
Yeah, that's why I say probably August sometime will be the best time.
I mean, we, this board can't commit the new board to do anything but where we have, we have three members here that.
Well, I'm bringing it up here.
Unless I don't get reelected, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big write-in campaign.
I'm letting Rick.
No. Big write-in campaign.
Okay, anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion? Have a second?
I'm too tired. Take a second.
I'll make the second.
All right.
All in favor?
Hold it, hold it, Doug. Oh, Doug.
We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.